Good afternoon, everyone. Today is Tuesday, November 12th, 2024, and this is the Salinas City Council meeting. This meeting is available in Spanish for members of the public in attendance and on Zoom. Translation devices can be obtained in the foyer. City Clerk?
Buenas tardes. Esta reunión está disponible en español para los miembros del público y en Zoom. Las unidades de traducción se pueden obtener en la entrada de la rotonda.
Please join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Councilmember Barrera, would you lead us?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barrera?
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Present.
Councilmember Osoño?
Here.
Councilmember Rocha?
Here.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Here.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Present.
Mayor Craig?
Here.
Thank you.
Excellent. Just for those people watching at home and in the audience, we have a couple of changes to the agenda. First and foremost, ID, excuse me, the Energy Services Financing Contract with NG for Facility Solar Projects has been continued to December 3rd, 2024. And those of you that are here to hear the public hearing on 24-671, the Establishment of Rent Stabilization Program Fees, Amendments of Rental Registration Fees, Approval of the Fiscal Year 2425 Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Program Budget and General Fund Loan Transfer, and Workforce Allocation Modification, that will begin at 7:00 PM tonight. All right, we will move on to our proclamations. We are going to start off with Small Business Saturday. We have Michael Gomez, our Economic Development Analyst here. Or he's on his way. I will go ahead and defer to Councilmember Valenzuela to give the proclamation.
Small Business Saturday, November 30th, 2024. Whereas, the city of Salinas celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy by providing essential services, creating jobs, paying taxes, and contributing to local charitable and community efforts. And whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 4.1 million small businesses in California, representing over 99% of all businesses with employees who are responsible for more than 48% of new jobs created from 2000 to 2023. And whereas, since 2011, the Senate of the United States has passed resolutions recognizing Small Business Saturdays, which was initially promoted by American Express in 2010 to encourage people nationwide to shop locally, increase awareness of the value of locally-owned small businesses, and highlight these businesses' impact on the United States economy. And whereas, according to the 2023 Small Business Saturday Consumer Insight Survey, spending among U.S. consumers who shopped at independent retailers and restaurants, a Small Business Saturday reached an estimated $17 billion. And whereas, the city of Salinas encourages its residents to support local businesses on the busiest shopping weekend of the year and throughout the holiday season, enjoying in this national effort to support small businesses do what they do best, growing their businesses and creating jobs, which is critical to support economic recovery and community resilience. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, do hereby proclaim November 30th as Small Business Saturday Day and urge all residents to recognize small businesses for the contributions they make in our community.
Excellent. Thank you. And I believe we have some folks from Salinas United Business Association, the Chamber of Commerce Local 411, and the Small Business Development Center here. If you'd like to get up and maybe give us 30 seconds of some background on Small Business Saturday.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Craig. My name is Paul Farmer with the Monterey County Business Council, where we have a number of programs to help small businesses in Monterey County and the city of Salinas succeed. I just want to remind some of the statistics in what Councilmember Valenzuela said. Small Business Saturday started 2010 by American Express. The following year, 2011, was adopted by the Small Business Administration. There are lots of resources on the SBA website, which is linked on our Central Coast SBDC, where you can get free marketing materials, social media campaigns, things like that. Last year, as he cited, $17 billion spent on that Saturday alone. So we mostly want to support our local businesses, raise their awareness, and we've brought a number of folks from different organizations here. I'll have next, just real quick, our SBDC Director, Roger Gilbert.
Good afternoon. Roger Gilbert, Director of the Small Business Development Center. We thank you for supporting small business and supporting small business through Small Business Saturday. The Small Business Development Center information can be found on centralcoastsbdc.com. Plenty of information for you there and the ability for any small business or potential small business to sign up for free services through us. So once again, thank you for your support. We appreciate it, and let us know if we can be of help.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your support. I'm Jordan Caballero with the Monterey Bay Apex Accelerator, another program hosted by the Monterey County Business Council. And we just had last week our first-ever Central Coast Procurement Expo. It was a chance to bring business and government together, and we help local businesses as well, for free, navigate government contracting. Once they have an established business through SBDC, we help them learn how to get federal, state, and local contracts. So we appreciate your support, and we're here to help.
Thank you. And we have Alejandro.
Thank you, Council and Mayor. We are in support of what we're here all together, of Small Business Saturday. But just really quickly, I just wanted to share two statistics. I might be a little off on my numbers, but it's about, wanted to share that about $1.2 million in sales tax revenue comes just from Suba in the first two quarters of this year alone. So, and those numbers are really low this year because our numbers have been really, really low overall. But, you know, I just wanted to share that number, that 1.2 million in sales tax, just from the Suba area. So this other areas all bring in the sales tax revenue for our community. The other thing I wanted to share with is that we will be doing some events on Small Shop Saturday, and we are today in partnership with Monterey County Business Council. We were out walking the Alisal and handing out Square Readers to some of our businesses that don't have access to credit cards. So some of our businesses that don't have a terminal that accepts credit cards, we were out giving out some Square Readers for free to our businesses from the Suba area. So that's something that we will continue to do so through Small Shop Saturday. In partnership with Negozie, one of our partners out of San Jose, and with Square Directly, we are able to give out some Square Readers. So we're going to be giving out about 40 to 50 Square Readers for free in our business area, and that's part of our way of trying to bring more business to our areas, specifically to our mom-and-pop shops in the Suba area. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, everyone. I am Trish Triumpho Sullivan. I'm a business owner in downtown Salinas and also a art professor at Hartnell College. I'm here tonight to thank you guys for celebrating Small Business Saturday in Salinas and supporting small businesses, and thank you all as a council for supporting all of our small businesses all around the city, not just in downtown. There are some posters that were very wonderfully printed by the city of Salinas in English and Spanish that are outside, that I would love everyone to take one, and including council members, and please post them somewhere around the city to support our local small businesses all over. In downtown, we've been doing this since 2010 in the very beginning and have partnered with Alisal to promote the entire, as much of the entire city as we can, and we post these all around the city. So thank you guys very much for honoring small businesses and supporting small businesses.
Thank you. And if you wouldn't mind sticking around just for a few minutes, we'll take a group photo, but I do want to get to our second proclamation, and then we'll do all at once. So we now have the National Native American Heritage Month, and Councilmember Gonzalez, you have this proclamation.
Thank you. National Native American Heritage Month, November 2024. Whereas during the National Native American Heritage Month, we honor the history, rich culture, and vast contributions of Native people within our community. And whereas, this commemoration allows our nation to pause and reflect on the profound ways the first Americans have shaped our country's character and culture, as the first stewards of our environment and early voices for the values that define our nation. And whereas, Native American contributions and values have shaped the social, political, environmental, and economic fabric of the country while also enhancing prosperity and cultural diversity. And whereas, the city of Salinas joins others across the nation in celebrating Native American Heritage Month and reaffirming our commitment to respect their sovereignty and cultural identity, now therefore, Mayor Kimble Craig, on behalf of the Salinas City Council, does hereby proclaim November as National Native American Heritage Month and encourages all residents to join in celebrating our Native American community. And we have a special invited guest here, Tribal Chairwoman Louise Miranda Ramirez. If you would be so kind as to come up and share a few words with us? Thank you.
I have quite a few words. So. Nishma, hiwail kitu kana msha masana tahui pisi, atsiapa mi amichak pasamua tas, efere hetan Aloni Coastanoan Esalen Nation, efere hetan, the Greater Monterey Bay Area. My name is Louise Miranda Ramirez, and I am the Tribal Chairwoman for Aloni Coastanoan Esalen Nation. I have been the Tribal Chairwoman since 2006 and continue to fight for our people to come back to our homeland. I'd like to say a small prayer before we get going here. In our custom, we ask that everyone stand and honor the Creator. So lasa noyam, las met, lasiapa, lasa swae, le tsalewa hiyu, leki alpa hik nomets tahui, lakata ahupa lechi, tohesa lechi neku ekipasa lakata ahapsa, sasi pi kominon hatan lechi, huli lek wel lakataiteka sa, sawu kominon hatan lepana, lakata tohesa lachi neku lohma pani machi la taiteka sa, tohesa lapas pani kominon le efere. Creator, grandfather and grandmothers and ancestors, we goodway come. We ask that you protect and guide us. Give us the strength and knowledge so that all of us reclaim our language and culture. Watch all of our children and give them the desire to know their culture and give peace to all of our people. Thank you. Which would be nima siyanal pa seleki, please see. Have a seat. Thank you. So I'd just like to bring to your attention that we have been here for a very long time, and I have reburied ancestors that are 4,000 years old and older, and some a few hundred and some even more thousands throughout Monterey County. And this is our families that we ask for respect and to make sure that we can rebury them when they are disturbed on projects of building new buildings or tearing down buildings. Our ancestors were never respected, and they were thrown in the trash, and we continue to fight for the right to protect them. And it's important, we've been here, we're still fighting, and we want you to know that former councilmember Sergio Sanchez in 2012 supported our efforts in inquiring land at Fort Ord for the Aloni Coastanoan Esalen Nation to build a cultural center that would have been a job provider and would have generated revenue, but it was stopped by the Board of Supervisors because they wanted us to pay full price for the land, even though fora had agreed that the land would come to our people. So former city councilmember Steve McShane, who got the city to dedicate one of its plaques in the front of this right here in City Hall that you can't even read. The last time I was here, I asked that it be cleaned because no one could read the stories that we have cultural stories of Coyote living in here in Salinas, and Coyote represents man. And so we tell the story of him having a picnic in Salinas. And so our history lets you know that we exist here, and that was the agreement that we would be one government to another. That's why the plaque was put in front. So I'd like to ask you to please make sure that be clean. And current city councilman member Orlando Osoño, who today presides over District 4, where a park will be opening next year, named after the original identity of this land, the Enson. We fought very hard to get that name to return. This is the area that was always known as Enson. Our people would come to this area from other areas in Monterey, as well as the people lived here, to gather blackberries as our food. And so it was a big fight, and working with Big Sur Land Trust, but it is now Enson, the park that's going to be opening. I hope that you remember that that's part of our history, part of our land, because we fought for that land, because we have elders who remember that at one time it was eight riverways there, and that the farmers cut that land back and drained the rivers to the ocean so that they could use the land for farming. It's not natural, and that's why last year when it flooded, I looked at Big Sur Land Trust and I said, "How many lakes was that?" You know, it was many. There was a lot of water there, and it was a lot for all the people, and not now. So we want to make sure that you know that story, that it be protected. And today, I realize that the people of Salinas are suffering. Many of our members who live all the way solid out, they can't afford to live here. And I lived here as a child, and the house still stands right here on Market Street. Went to school right down the street here. And I think it's so important that we make sure our people are protected, that our people have homes and food, and the sovereignty for food is so important. And I hope that you would work to make sure that our people are not evicted from their homes and that they have good homes to be in, and continue with the medical care. We've been promised land. We are working on that. We have 84 acres that will be coming to us through Big Sur Land Trust, and we hope to have a cultural center. But I always want to be here in Salinas. I always wanted to be here because this is where I grew up and remember Halloween, remember the holidays going around. And so one day, I hope that you find a way for us to come to Salinas, to come back, to have a cultural center, to have a wellness center, to have food sovereignty for all people that we need to protect. There are a lot of indigenous people, just because it's not just us, there are many. So I ask you to think about that, to work for the people. I want to say nima siyanal pa seleki, which is our word for thank you, but in reality it means my heart feels good speaking to you, and I hope to work with you. And I left my cards for you. If you want to call me, please do. I'm more than willing to talk about whatever we can do for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very much appreciate that. And Ms. Ramirez, if you wouldn't mind sticking around for just a moment, we'll take a photo with you with the proclamation. I do want to make sure that we get through all of our proclamations, but we'll have you up in just a moment. Thank you. Now we are moving on to City of Champions, and we have the Monterey Salinas Transit Volunteer Navigator Program, and Councilmember Barrera is here to make those announcements.
Yes, well, thank you, Mayor. You know, in celebration of Small Business, Native American Heritage Month, we have some heavy hitters this evening, some Monterey Salinas Transit volunteers that do some great work in our community. But before I invite them to acknowledge them, I would like our MST representative, if you can also introduce yourself, please, and just share a little bit about what the Navigator Program is about. Thank you. Welcome. Let's give them a round of applause, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor Craig. My name is Kelly Soriano, and this is my supervisor, Ruben Gomez. We both work for Monterey Salinas Transit in the Mobility Department. And good afternoon, councilmembers and the public. Thank you for the recognition. I am Kelly Soriano, and I oversee the MST Navigator Program. Here with me tonight are Willie Gray, we have Juvenal Solorio. And we also have Christopher Renzulo, who's coming in a little bit. And, you know, very happy that they're being recognized as the City of Champions. They are making a huge difference in our community with our seniors, people with disabilities, and veterans. They provide valuable information about MST services and how we can also improve those services to our community. We are always looking for more volunteers, if anyone is interested in giving back to the community, and thank you again for the recognition.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, in listening to Mr. Chavez from Suba, 1.2 million tax revenue in the Alisal, let me just share with you what Monterey Salinas Transit does in the Alisal, and not only there, but throughout the county. Major corridors such as East Alisal Street and Williams Road have the highest ridership in MST's network. Along the East Alisal Corridor and Town Street, with an average of 49 boardings per day. Williams Road, the highest ridership occurs on Williams and Barton Way, with an average of 55 boardings per day. You know, one of the beautiful things about Alisal is you have a hard-working population. MST, a lot of times, takes some of these folks not only to the doctor, but shopping or going out on an outing with the family, but a lot of them go to work in the peninsula on the bus. So you see a lot of buses taking off in the peninsula early in the morning and coming back late in the evening. But before I acknowledge these gentlemen that are true champions, I met a young man here, and he just came in. Christopher?
Yes.
I was so intrigued with Christopher here. I met him at the Firehouse Recreation Center, Christopher Renzulo.
Renzulo, yes.
Renzulo. Christopher, just share with the audience what you do with the Navigator Program, please. And we're going to be brief, but I want you to share the passionate story that you're telling.
Come on up to the microphone. Yep.
Folks, thank you very much. So in brief, about a year and a half ago, I was looking for an opportunity to get back to my community, and I have about 20 years' deep experience using public transit. I find that although it sometimes takes longer, it can be useful time and allows flexibility, that sort of thing. It also offers a lot of mobility, and not just physical mobility, but also economic mobility, education mobility. And so I've been building my skills, taking over more responsibilities, and it's really helped me to grow as a person and to give back to my community, and that is what I most appreciate about that opportunity.
Well, Christopher, today, the mayor and this council, and I'm sure the public, would like to thank you for your volunteer service, for your contributions to Monterey Salinas Transit Volunteer Navigator Program. Thank you for being a valuable member of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to invite, also, there's a big heavyweight here, Mr. Willie Thomas Gray. Could you come over here? If you feel more comfortable just there, Mr. Willie, or you want to come to the microphone, say some words? Thank you, sir.
I really appreciate coming up here and saying a few words. I really enjoyed being a volunteer. I've been working practically all my life. I was a building contractor. I worked for DMV. I worked for the city of Seaside, too. So I finally decided to retire and do some volunteer work and take care of some of the people like me that are retired, that are seniors, take care of us old folks, so we can have a good time with the rest of our life. We want to enjoy our life, and we want to thank you for inviting us here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The spirit of MST, Willie. We have another campeón, a champion, Mr. Juvenal Solorio. Muchas gracias, señor. Would you like to say something? Can somebody?
Alexis, could you adjust the podium?
Thank you.
Buenas tardes y muchas gracias por invitarme aquí. Estoy muy agradecido trabajar con la compañía MST y tratar en ayudar lo que pueda, y estoy muy contento. Muchas gracias.
Muchas gracias, señor. Thank you.
So, I'm sorry?
I can translate.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Hello. Good afternoon. I am very grateful for being here. I am so grateful to be working with MST and be able to help everybody. I'm very happy about it. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
All right. So I'm going to take this a quick moment and ask that the Small Business Saturday folks come on up first, then we will do Ms. Ramirez with the National Native American Heritage, and then we will take the picture with Monterey Salinas Transit Volunteers. I can't. Yep, thank you. Come on down. Okay, we have quite an agenda that we need to get through, and I want to make sure that folks have the opportunity to speak in public comment. So we'll go ahead and open a public comment right now. If you wish to make a general public comment or comment on a specific agenda item, you're encouraged to attend the city council meeting in person or attend the Zoom webinar and use the raise hand icon. Email public comments received have been distributed to the mayor, the council, the city clerk, and will be entered into the permanent record. We have a fun crew here, okay. Public comments generally are limited to two minutes per speaker. I may further limit the time for public comments depending on the agenda schedule. Okay, we are now open. God bless you guys, okay. So we are now open for public comments, and I can tell that we have something very serious to address with the council. So with that, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Craig, city councilors, and community members. My name is Angela Savage. I'm a small business owner, have two companies here in downtown Salinas. And I have a feeling that there's the holiday spirit in this room. I can just feel it. Behind me are awesome committee members for the Holiday Home Lighting Competition. So we're here to announce that the Holiday Home Lighting Competition is back, bigger and better for 2024. We have partnered with the City of Salinas, and it's time to deck the halls, light up the night, and show off your holiday spirit. We're also announcing new and exciting award categories and bigger opportunities to celebrate creativity and community pride. The, it's up on the city website, and we have flyers in English and Spanish. And you can scan the QR code to enter. The nomination window is now until December 1st, so short time period. But we're here also today to, as the councilors, to, if you'd like to be involved, it is an event that just warms the heart. And we have a little task for you, which is semifinalist selection. And that begins on December 2nd. If you could reach out to your constituents or if you see folks that are already into it, let them know they could enter. So we need your help, and we would love to see all districts and councilors involved. And it's a great event. If you have been a part of it in the past, it's been going on for 20 years. And with this amazing committee and the City of Salinas help, especially thanks to the Santa Lucia Rotary Club, the Downtown Salinas Rotary Club, and my companies, Steinbeck Real Estate and Steinbeck Mortgage, are sponsors. We have expanded our categories and prizes. We have first place overall, and my, a special category for handmade D Y I.
Excellent. I'm gonna, do you have two, like, a couple more award categories to acknowledge?
Yes.
Then I'm gonna hand it off to Anna Abad so that I'm fair in giving everybody two minutes. And we'll have Anna finish your, your point so that we know where the, the community. Uh-oh, sorry. Or someone else.
Yeah, somebody else, because Anna's got the wrong glasses on right now.
Okay, Michael's here. First place, best handmade, right here, Neighborhood Spirit.
So Neighborhood Spirit, Group of Homes, am I reading the whole thing?
Yep.
So Neighborhood Spirit, Group of Homes, or Block. Winners enjoy a city-promoted community visit on December 14th, complete with a refreshment yard sign. Trophy from the Salinas-Santa Lucia Rotary and Steinbeck Real Estate and Mortgage, and a certificate from the city council. The next one is six holiday cheer awards, one per city council district. Winners receive a city yard sign and a certificate from the city council. And then for full details, visit the official event page, 2024 Holiday Home Lighting Competition. Let's light up the City of Salinas and celebrate the holidays in style.
Excellent, thank you. And that's an open call for folks to start decorating their homes to be a part of the Holiday Home Lighting Competition. Thank you for being here.
Thank you for your support.
All right, so we are now in public comments, so I'm gonna ask that we refrain from clapping at this point. But come on forward, we want everyone to feel empowered to speak. And you are welcome.
Mary Ann Warden. I don't know if any of you have received the AAA magazine, but we made it. It's a really nice article. But I don't know where this farm is at because I've never seen this building and this barn. So if anyone knows where that's at, please tell me, I'd like to see it. But anyway, it's a really, really nice article, and it's the first time I've seen anything on Salinas in all the years I've been receiving it. So I thought that was really nice, and I just got it yesterday. So anyone, check it out.
Excellent, thank you. Thank you. Okay. I'm gonna ask that we refrain from clapping at this point. Thank you, I appreciate it. That's okay.
Good after eve, everyone. I am Kimberly Bryant. I'm here to offer a prayer to the city council, to the mayor, city council members, and to everyone in the room. It is the Lord's prayer, please join me if you know it. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, and deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. The Lord bless you and keep you, make his face shine upon you, and be gracious to you. The Lord turn his face toward you and give you peace. Thank you so much for your service.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Folks, how are you? I'm gonna start off with a quote from Albert Einstein. Folks, you cannot solve a problem with the same mind that created it. In the past 50 years plus, fairness, equality, justice, and freedom for all are words that have been used and overused in political discussions, but little has been done to implement them. For me, a worthy leader has a desire to serve, not to dominate or cater to the wants of the rich elite or corporates, or corporations, I'm sorry. Today, elected officials who truly represent and collaboratively work for their voters are character assassinated by the rich and their money. Furthermore, the rich buy their candidates and/or elections. See the Monterey County Weekly October edition. In my humble opinion, Andrew Sandoval, Tony Barrera, Orlando Osornio, and Anthony Rivas are victims of the big money machine. For what? Having the desire to serve their communities. I believe that true democracy is doable, but it's up to the common folks to co-create it. People, let's start electing open-minded candidates to solve today's problems created by the many present status quo-minded elected officials. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm gonna ask that we don't clap, please. We want to make sure that everyone feels empowered to speak. Welcome.
My name is Jose de Jesus Gomez. And the reason I'm here is I just put a petition at the city yard to repaint the sidewalk in my, my area. Where I live, you know, there's always cars parked in the driveway. I mean, not in the driveway, but right next to it, there's, you know, I always have a challenge to get in and get out of my, my house. So every time I call the police, I have to give them my explanation. And then after that, I talk to the police officer. They asked me if they're blocking me, they're blocking my driveway, which they're not driving, you know, I can go through safely. But it's, you know, like, it's, I, it's annoying that somebody goes and parks and grab a little piece of the driveway. And that's every, you know, like, that's not every day, but you know, it's constantly. So, you know, I'm quite sure that, you know, you guys have a record of all the times that I call. So when the people from the city yard comes and asks you, you know, like, if they can repaint the sidewalk red, please, you know, like, help me on this. Thank you very much.
If you'd like to leave your name with the city clerk, we'll have someone follow up with you. Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon. My name is Bill Freeman. I'm here to, this afternoon, to support my good friend, Andrew Sandoval. This city has been controlled since 1874 by the big money interests. And, and currently, there's a group of people in this city that's organizing recall against him, which I think is wrong. They're misleading his voters. And we need, this city does not just belong to the big money interests. It belongs to all of us. Bobby Kennedy, 1966, said this. Few will have the greatness of history itself. Each time a person steps up to improve the lot of others, that person sends a million different centuries to knock down the mightiest walls of oppression. And we, we need Andrew here, working for us. I work, and he lives in my district, he represents my district. And I'm not gonna allow the big money interest people to push us around anymore. It's going to end this year. They don't own this town. They don't control what happens here, and it's gonna end this year.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, city council, honorable man of mayor. Just to piggyback on the previous comment, it's, as, as a neighborhood organizer, it draws this, this issue, as quoted in the Monterey County Coast Weekly by Tyler Barola. Salinas is suffering a leadership crisis from the chaos created by our city council. The ringleader of this chaos is council member Andrew Sandoval. As a community organizer, to have to receive this kind of information from a publication like this or from other sources that are dominating the narrative, it makes our job a lot more challenging because of what we're experiencing here has been relationship building, identifying priorities, and making sure that our voices can be heard, the, our resident voices can be heard. And so if this council can, can help clear that air, contribute some, some kind of effort to clear this air, because it's, it's what's needed, and what we don't want is, is a recall election. It's gonna cost our, our residents, our neighbors, my neighbors, money. When that, when that money can be used to repair our sidewalks, our roads, and much more other items that we all know need priority. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
I'd actually like to correct my friend Bill on one detail of what he said. The whole thing is funded from outside Salinas, so trying to create their own little oligarchy. My name is Eric Peterson, and last week, a Trader Joe's opened in Marina. Why don't we have one? We get a much ballyhooed barbecue place that lasts a couple of years. Togo's didn't last long. The hot dog place on Gablin Street was even shorter than that. But we've got 160,000-plus people. Marina's got like 22,000. Why can't we get a Trader Joe's? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello again, and I'm still Trish Triumpho Sullivan. And I just wanted to say just a couple of words about this particular council and to thank you for your service. I have to say that voting to increase the pay for both the mayor and the city council was brilliant. You guys do way more than part-time jobs, and it opens it up to younger people who are, who would like to serve their community and who would like to do, to make positive change in the community as well and support our community members. So I want to thank you guys for that. And then I have something very brief to say as well. It's from the, the Huda Nusance. Greetings for the natural world. It's also known as the Iroquois Confederacy, whose great law of peace was the blueprint for our U.S. Constitution. And it's, it's often called the Thanksgiving Address. The people, today we have gathered and we see the cycles of life continue. We have been given the duty to live in balance and harmony with each other and with all living beings. So now we bring our minds together as one, as we give greetings and thanks to each other as people. So thank you. The Earth Mother, we are thankful to our mother, the earth, for she gives us all that we need for life. She supports our feet as we walk about upon her. It gives us joy that she continues to care for us as she has from, as she has from the beginning of time. To our mother, we send greetings and thanks. Now our minds are one. The waters, we give thanks to all of the waters of the world for quenching the thirst and providing us with strength. Water is life. We know its power in many forms, waterfalls and rain, mists and streams, rivers and oceans. With one mind, we send greetings and thanks to the spirit of water. Now our minds are one. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I look to Native American Month every month. I'm curious to know why our city only wants to honor him once. Is that a bigoted thing, or why can't we just name every month for Native Americans? I look to them for strength and, and energy myself. We look to the city and businesses come in and out. Why don't we have a Trader Joe's? Because we don't have a city council that can deliver it. We don't have legal counsel that can give appropriate advice to our council or our mayor. We look at situations like Amazon. I think there's some documents that haven't been made public about the security of that deal and to the constituents of the city. And I think if we looked at that, we could see some very, very poor legal counsel. I think this election was a referendum. People say it's big money dominating. It was a landslide loss for social agenda warriors focusing on what their constituents absolutely don't care about. When we look at our city and this dysfunction, it's been widely spread amongst you all that it's all dysfunctional. And there are some powers to be out there for one of our council members here in this recall deal, and I say, get out there and defend yourself. Because nobody reads the Weekly. Nobody reads these sources. Get out there, get in front of your people, shake some hands, go to the parks. And, you know, we, we want to look at dysfunction. Let's look hypothetically. If a city had a legal counsel having an affair with another person on the council, would that be a conflict of interest? Curious to know. Curious to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Thank you. I just want to bring to your attention, because this is political, you're political. We've been here for thousands of years, our people, and we're not federally acknowledged. And just a couple of weeks ago, I spoke with Zoe Lofgren on an issue, and I know she's not coming back, but they've refused to acknowledge us because they're afraid that we're going to do a casino. But yet, in Carmel Pinecone, I just saw that they're opening, and they're talking about, casino, come and do all the games, all the people, all the gaming. We know there's card rooms here in Salinas. You allow those. But you choose not to allow indigenous people their sovereign rights based on what's always been with us. We've been destroyed many times, and we come back. We are fighters. We will not give up. We will not accept what is being told to us that we must do. We will fight for that. It's our sovereign right. And we ask you and every city here and every politician to acknowledge who we are. My great-grandfather and great-grandmother are buried here in Salinas, and they're the only people identified by name by Congress, okay? In 1906. They're the only tribal people acknowledged by name. And no other ones around here in 1906 as the landers. So acknowledge us, know who we are, and support our existence. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, City Council. Good evening. My name is Olga Reyna, and I am here to say no to the recall to, for Andrew Sandoval. It is not right. This recall is based on lies. And lies and, and just hearsay and things that don't make sense, that have no, no meaning at all. So I'm here to say no to the recall because it's going to cost money. The lies have, that were told to the residents, so they would sign the petition, they were all lies, based on lies. So I am saying no to the recall for Andrew Sandoval. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Janie Ramirez, and I stand behind Andrew Sandoval as well. A lot of lies. This campaign for elections was just the worst I've ever seen for a city like ours. So much innuendo, so much slander, I mean, just non-true facts. I walked the streets in Andrew's community. I spoke to many of the homeowners there, and they had no clue they were signing off on a recall. They were totally shocked. They said, well, they just said they wanted to have streets cleaned up and sidewalks fixed. I said, no, you actually signed off on a petition to have Andrew removed. And they said, no, we weren't informed that. So again, more lies. Me and two other ladies went door to door to those hounds. And then Crime Watch, those people behind all this, posted, they're being harassed by these ladies, bullying, just harassing them to get them to sign another form. And we did not go out with that intention. We were, we were kind, we were polite, we were just trying to get the right and the positive feedback for Andrew. It's amazing what people will do nowadays just to, you know, destroy someone's character when it's not right. And we need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. I'm going to ask that we refrain from clapping, please. I want everyone to feel empowered. Thank you. You're welcome.
Council members, madam, I, my name is Eleanor Elliott, and I am a resident of Andrew Sandoval's district. I'm, I live in District Five. This recall effort is distracting Mr. Sandoval from doing the work that needs to be done in, in our district, the work that he has, oh, he has been doing. We see him on the streets, looking, you know, meeting with his, with his constituents, walking the streets, looking at the streets and the sidewalks. He's brought in new businesses. He's made our place a really comfortable place to live, our district. And I really disagree with this, with this recall effort. It was, it was based on lies. Like she was saying, people were tricked into signing this recall. It's not okay. I don't agree with it, and I want to keep my city council member. I want to keep Andrew Sandoval right where he is. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, my name is Mary Morsoli, and I also want to not have the recall for Sandoval because Sandoval has been helping us, and I want to, him to finish up what he starts. And he is a man of his word, and I believe in him. And I don't want the recall. I don't want him to be, I want him to be left alone and do his job. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, so I'm Eloise Shim, and I already talked last week about Andrew Sandoval. I don't support the recall, so I hope people don't follow through with it or give it any energy. And, but the other thing that I want to talk about is I just found out that the UK, November in the UK, they have something called Freedom from Islamophobia Month. And we don't have anything like that in the United States, but I think it would be nice in Salinas since we have a mosque here in Salinas. And I think it would be nice to have some kind of resolution about freedom from Islamophobia, and also a resolution about Palestine, because genocide has been going on in Palestine, and there hasn't been anything really said about it from the city council. So either a resolution, or ordinance, or something about a ceasefire in Palestine, or support, I know there is many cities in California that support a ceasefire and support for Palestine. So I think in Salinas, we should also do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Olga, y aquí estoy para apoyar al señor Sandoval, que no estamos de acuerdo que lo destituyen de su, de su puesto que está, porque son mentiras lo que le están levantando, y estamos con él, pero estamos apoyando que se quede en su puesto. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Olga, and I'm here this day in support of Mr. Sandoval. We don't agree with his recall. We think it's, everything is lies. We are here giving, giving him our full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Buenas tardes, mi nombre es Claudia Núñez, y estoy aquí porque no estoy de acuerdo en, con la destitución del concejal Sandoval, porque está basada en mentiras y falsas acusaciones. Han engañado a los residentes para que firmen. Yo no, yo digo no a la destitución. No queremos dividir la comunidad mejor que colaboremos con el concejal Sandoval para que todos estemos unidos. Gracias.
Good afternoon. My name is Claudia Núñez, and I'm here because I don't agree with council member Sandoval's recall. We don't agree with it. It is based on lies, and everything they're saying, it's not true. We were asked to sign a document, but they weren't honest when they asked for our signature, so we're saying no to the recall. We're asking for the community to stay united in collaboration and support of council member Sandoval, because we don't want to divide the community, want the community to be together. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello, David Masonev. I just wanted to say, even though I'm not in his district, Andrew has been very approachable, been a person that's been very easy to talk to. He's had, he had one town hall thing where he was meeting people, meet and greet. And I could be a naive individual. I, I kind of like to look at people from a positive side. I think Andrew is an amazingly nice guy, and I think that he has not just his district, but the city in, in mind when he thinks through things. So anyway, just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Sally Brunetta, and I've been a school teacher here at Salinas City for over 46 years. And one of my former students is Orlando Osorio. And he was a fantastic student, a very generous, giving individual. I have so many wonderful memories of him. And I know Anthony Rocha. I know Andrew Sandoval. I know Barrera. I know all of these people, and they're all wonderful people. And what I see happening right now, I think this is dysfunctional. Everything that's been happening with the elections, with this recall on Andrew, I can't make any sense of all this. It's very heartbreaking for me. I love all these people. They've been great. And I've been around them. I've been at meetings with them. I've spoken to all of them, and I know what they're like. They're wonderful people, and I'm so sorry that our, our community is doing all this. This is dysfunctional, this, we're, our community now is dysfunctional. We need to correct this. And we can start correcting it by making sure that we support Andrew. We don't need to continue what's going on. We need to stop it and turn these things around and make this community a better community. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Jason Pineda. I am in District Three. I'm not in Andrew Sandoval's district, but I just wanted to echo what many of the people have said. I support him. I got to spend a little bit of time with him during the last week of the election and getting to learn about his background and his experiences as a politician. I, I believe everything that he says. I think he's a great person. And yeah, I just, I don't support the recall. And also, I wanted to say thank you to the council for, I, the rent stabilization, and so, thank you very much.
Hi, welcome.
Hello, Wes Wyatt, Lee and Spondery County Homeless Union co-president. Checking in today, you know, like, I think one of the cool things, what I heard today was when, when we were doing the Lord's Prayer, and a lot of people were into that. And I'm, I'm searching for some radical love from the community, as well as the diocese. Been begging you for a while. But, you know, some radical love would be allowing people to be somewhere 24 hours a day, our residents, our neighbors, especially if they're signed up in the continuum of care. We can identify them, they, they should be harmless. They're the same people, we're revictimizing them on a daily basis, weekly basis, either by Public Works and Police Department, or Union Pacific Railroad. One way or another, everybody's possessions get stolen. So all the love that comes from a free meal once a month, and all the clothes that come when the church comes and decides they're, they're going to be benevolent that one day, and pray on them, pray over them. But, you know, they need support, daily support and foundational support. And that, that means 400 square feet and a structure, 20 feet by 20 feet. If they can maintain and steward that amount of land, then that also proves that they're housing ready. You know, there needs to be running water, electricity, shower, laundry, kitchen, generators. We, we have to allow for these things. And we've, I've had union chapters that have proven this to be correct. In fact, it helped and improved the landscape, as well as the, the people that went through Shorewood Park for over a year. We've maintained, it's about survival, and I, I think that needs to be recognized, and people should not be attacked for being too poor to afford rent, especially on a daily basis. We, we need to do better, and that's what I'm asking for, running water and electricity, and stopping the sweeps altogether. You're supposed to be posting a notice. You never do. You need to start.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment in the chambers. We'll go over to Zoom. We have some hands raised on Zoom. Welcome. We'll go first. You have two minutes, Beatrice Diaz. Welcome.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Good evening, mayor, council member, and everyone present there. My name is Beatrice Diaz. I have been a resident in Greenfield since January 1965. You are all probably wondering why I am, I am here today. If you're wondering why I'm here, why I'm here, I must tell you that you have a wonderful, transparent council member, Mr. Sandoval. Not that he serves Salinas, but tries to help everyone who has a need. You all are elected officials, and each one of you elected to serve the community, work as a team, be transparent, help those in need. My reason for being here is simple. This is not a first time that a Brown Act violation has been broken in a city of Greenfield. This needed to stop. Some residents are afraid if they speak out, there will be retaliation. Therefore, it was time to seek some help. Residents of Greenfield contacted Mr. Andrew Sandoval to help regarding a Greenfield council member's appointment seat. That was not carried out through due process. Thank you, council members Sandoval, for your help and for your, for our victory. This is not the first time, the first time council member Sandoval has helped our residents in Greenfield. That is just his character in helping others. The city of Greenfield was sued, the judge went in our favor and considered the appointment seat was illegal and was declared null and void. The Brown Act states that the agenda needs to be posted in advance for every public meeting, and let the public know that they will discuss, the public, to have the opportunity to make the public comment. This was not the case for Greenfield residents. Again, council members Sandoval, I thank you from the bottom of my heart, and so do us our residents of Greenfield. Thank you for all your help. And as far as the recall, I'm with everybody that don't want the recall. Don't fall for those lies, Greenfield residents in District Five. Bye, bye, bye. Say no to the recall. Thank you for...
Thank you. All right, we'll go with Brian Shields, Norquel Carpenters. You have two minutes. Welcome.
Hello, good evening. My name is Brian Shields. I'm a field rep with Carpenter's Local 646, and I wanted to add my voice to the support of city council member Sandoval. We are against the, we are against him being recalled. I also wanted to speak for a second about, you know, responsible general contractors doing work in Salinas. It's, it provides a family-sustaining job where, you know, people can plan their lives out, can plan for housing, can plan for the multitude of things that it takes to actually have a family, you know? We have many members that live in Salinas, and unfortunately, many of them have to commute up to the Bay Area in, in order to work. I think that there should be a, a much greater opportunity provided to general contractors that have signed on to do the right thing on every project, public and private, to provide that opportunity then for the constituents that live in your city, to the members of the local, and be able to open up the local to provide that opportunity to a greater and greater amount of people, this middle, middle-class opportunity. You know, before I got in the union, I made $18 an hour, and I was told I was fired before I hit the ground when I was framing roofs. And then I got in the union, and all of a sudden I had healthcare and dignity. So it means everything to me, and I want to provide that to the next generation. I appreciate it, and I apologize for not being there in person. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have Aidé. Next up, you have two minutes. Welcome.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Aidé Faidéaz. I'm a lifelong resident, born and raised here in Salinas. I am also speaking in support of Andrew Sandoval and against the recall effort. I was one of the three ladies that walked District Five neighborhood to talk with folks that had signed the petition, and it was really disheartening to learn that fellow residents and neighbors were so poorly misled, and that they were really tricked into signing something that had really ill intent and was faceless. something that had really ill intent and was baseless. It was also really disheartening to learn that so many of those residents were elderly. It's really unfortunate. Our city is facing so many challenges. There is a lot of good work that this council has to do on a regular basis. And it was really just sad to learn that so many people's intentions to want to just improve their city was used to try to validate an effort that is baseless, that didn't even met the threshold of actually having, you know, real reasons for wanting to remove someone who was elected by its Council Five residents. And so, I just want to remind everyone to make sure that you read things completely, that something that's going to potentially take energy and resources from the city is actually vetted, and that we don't waste the council's time and the city's money in frivolous accusations against council members. There's real work that needs to be done here and continue. And I just wanted to remind everyone that. And I want to also thank this council and the mayor for the work that you've done. It's been a lot, and we have many challenges still ahead. As people have shared in public comment, we still have work to do, and it requires collaboration and it requires decision-making and collaboration. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, we have Robin next. Welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Craig. Since the city manager's arrival in May, he has failed to consistently lock the gate at Montebella Park despite ongoing safety concerns raised by the community. The handling of this year's Fourth of July celebration diverted first responder resources, leaving the community vulnerable to illegal fireworks and compromised public safety. Moreover, the widespread use of loud illegal fireworks is often traumatizing for veterans, the elderly, children, and pets. The disregard for these concerns exposes a disconnect between political rhetoric about valuing our veterans and further illustrates a pattern of minimizing the importance of public safety and the overall well-being of residents. Our city streets are a mess, and in fact, despite having been recently repaid, it appears that areas en blanco between South Main and Davis have already started to erode. A few months ago, Councilmember Valens Willett suggested town hall meetings to improve communication with the public. Despite his decades of experience and a base salary well over a quarter of a million dollars, the city manager has yet to fully engage with residents in a public setting to address our ongoing concerns. Finally, the city's manager's behavior during council meetings is concerning. On multiple occasions, he has appeared disengaged, avoided eye contact with constituents, and displayed dismissive body language. These childlike reactions, especially from a city manager with extensive experience and a substantial salary, are unacceptable. We need a leader who will prioritize public safety, ensure transparency and accountability, and focus on the needs of our community. Candidly, we need and deserve better. And I also do not support the recall of Councilmember Sandoval, and I'll be addressing that at another meeting. Thank you.
All right, we are going on to Carrie Swenson. Welcome. You have two minutes. Carrie Swenson, you're up. If you'd like to unmute yourself. All right, we'll go ahead and put Carrie on hold for the time being. Do we have the ability to go on to Matt Huerta? Okay. Go ahead and go with Matt Huerta. Welcome.
Welcome, Mayor, council members. Matt Huerta, Salinas resident. The election was a wave election for a lot of reasons. I think we're all reflecting on this, and we'll have to work through the implications, both locally and nationally. We need to come together as a community. The sooner the better. It's almost over, and the final, final results will be announced soon. New council members will be seated. I and other community members will work with new leaders, even when there are disagreements, just as we always have. The recall effort against Councilmember Sandoval has no substantive merit. Recalls are a serious matter that should be reserved for egregious conduct, severe breaches of trust, where the elected official's continued service is a detriment to his constituents and the community overall. Agree or disagree with his politics or approach, Councilmember Sandoval's conduct does not warrant a recall. This effort will divide our community and cause more damage and dysfunction that the effort is supposedly against. I ask the mayor and other leaders to send a clear message that this misplaced recall effort should not move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go back to Carrie Swenson. Carrie? You have two minutes. Welcome. Carrie, you are up next. All right, we'll go ahead and put Carrie on hold, and we'll go to Chris Barrera. Hi, Chris, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Chris Barrera, and I'm a lifelong resident of Salinas. I am here in support of Councilman Andrew Sandoval. Mr. Sandoval is the kind of person who is very engaging, honest, and has the biggest heart. We are very lucky to have a person of his caliber representing Salinas, and especially in District Five. Mr. Sandoval is an example of what a city council person should be. He answers his phone, he calls back in a timely manner, he visits residents at their home, he knows how to listen, and he gets results. He does his best to serve all of us and what all of us residents should want: stop the corruption, stop the backdoor deals, stop the kickbacks, stop the wasteful spending, invest in all neighborhoods, and he does his best to make Salinas a better, safer, and smoother place to live in. At the end of the day, isn't that what we all want? When Salinas has been ran really forever for big business, big ag, and big money, it's only natural for those who have always received what they want, who are spoiled and entitled, to be upset. For the good old boy club, the status quo, and the establishment, there is a whole rest of the city who has been ignored, except for the past four years. Andrew has been part of that historic moment in time of Salinas, and I could not be more proud of him and the entire city council. With this last election, it's a shame because this is the result will be because of money, hit piece mailers, and lies. Shame on those responsible for this behavior. All of the accusations Mr. Sandoval has been accused of is just more of this behavior. We are lucky to have Andrew Sandoval as an elected official because he does the real job of serving our community, and I ask all of you to vote no on the recall. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we have one more. Carrie Swenson. Carrie, you have two minutes. Welcome.
We vote no on the recall. So, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, my name is Carrie Swenson. I am a resident of District Three, and my business, Silver Learning Center, is in Andrew Sandoval's District Five. And I'm here calling against the recall of Andrew Sandoval. He is a honest, trustworthy person who does what he says he's going to do. I've known him since 2018, and I've only known him to be honest, forthright. He truly cares about the whole community. He cares about everybody. And he wants truth, he wants transparency. And that's what we should all want. That's what we want. If, you know, sometimes when you search for the truth, things come out that people don't want to come out. And I don't think Andrew's intention isn't to hurt anybody. It is to make sure that everyone is safe and comfortable in this city. So, it's a shame that this recall is, it's redirected his attention that should be on the city and improving the city. And yes, he's District Five, but as a District Three resident, I feel like he's my council member as well. If I call him and I need something, he's there. So, this recall is baseless. There's no truth to it. There's lies. And it's a waste of city council time and money, and it should be voted down. It should not happen, and new council's going to come in, and we should get to business to helping our residents. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment, and we will move on to our first item, which is a public hearing. I do want to point out that we are on a timeframe. So, Mr. Wiles, I recognize this is a large project. Wondering if you can keep the presentation succinct? And I would ask the same of council for questions and comments. We've got a lot to get through prior to our closed session and the rent stabilization ordinance that's scheduled for 7:00 PM. With that, Tom Wiles, our senior planner, is here to give the report. Thank you. Welcome.
Mayor Craig and council members. This is an application for the PUD amendment. Is proposed by Ethan Conrad Properties, who's the applicant property owner. It's a third amendment to the PUD to change the exterior building elevations, add additional exterior colors and new exterior signs that exceed the maximum allowed sign area. The project is to create multiple tenants within a former two-story, 137,366 square foot former Sears store, which closed in 2020, and on a 2.85 acre project site located at the Northridge Mall Shopping Center at 1100 Northridge Mall. It's regulated by a 2014 PUD. Okay, thank you. The, the general plan designation for the site is retail, and zoning is commercial retail. General plan designation is retail, zoning is commercial retail. It's the partition an approximately 117,101 square foot portion of this building into five tenants: Burlington Coat Factory, O'Reilly Auto Parts, Gohan Ase Buffet, Dave &amp; Buster's, which also has a pending separate conditional use permit for on sale alcohol and a future tenant on the second floor. The pending, there are pending amendments, minor modification, excuse me, minor modifications to the existing PUD that will be incorporated into this amendment. The Northridge Mall consists of 12 individual parcels of approximately 93.74 acres. Surrounding uses are commercial and residential. It's regulated by PUDs that have dated back from 1969, 1978, and 2014. This is a proposal to the Third Amendment to the 2014 PUD. The two other PUDs were in 2018 to increase reader board sign area and add around one sign, and in 2022 for raisin canes. Next parcel, please. Post-floor plan is the, the first floor plan would be for Burlington Coat Factory, Gohan Ase Buffet, and O'Reilly Auto Parts would be located in the first floor. The Burlington will be located in this spot. The Gohan Ase Buffet on the spot, this is in this location. O'Reilly Auto Parts will be located in this location, the first floor. And the primary residence, entrance for Dave &amp; Buster's will be on the first floor. And this area here is a smashing access, is a previous CUP which has no, which is not a part of the PUD amendment. The second floor will be for Dave &amp; Buster's primary operation and for a future tenant. The building elevations, there are no changes to the west elevation. There will be changes to the east elevation for the Burlington Coat Factory, Dave &amp; Buster's, and Gohan Ase Buffet. And then south elevation changes for O'Reilly Auto Parts and Gohan Ase Buffet. Okay, the eastern, new wall signs will be located on the east and south elevations. The zoning code maximum allows 675.48 square feet. 811.63 square feet are proposed. These are reasonable and necessary for the proposed project, and they're consistent with the raisin canes. There are also additional colors and materials, the tenant, for tenant entrances in the proposed signs, and these are consistent with the rest of the Northridge Mall Shopping Center. In order to approve the PUD amendment, City Council is required to establish zoning code findings for approval that are stated in the draft City Council Resolution. There is no proposed increase in the gross floor area. There is, currently, there was a previous reciprocal easement act agreement, REA, which expired earlier this year. A new REA will be required prior to final inspection. Staff also notes that the project site is subject to Assembly Bill 2097, which requires that provided parking is optional, and that there's also another condition requires replacement of all missing landscaping that is located within the project site. The Planning Commission, on October 16th, 2024, recommended approval of the project, and that the project has been deemed exempt from the California Environment Quality Act. And therefore, staff recommends the City Council approve the PUD amendment. Are there any questions of staff at this time?
Excellent. Thank you. All right, I will go ahead and start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez, questions? Councilmember Barrera, questions? Councilmember Osorio, questions?
Mayor, no questions. I reserve for comment.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval, questions?
No questions.
All right. Councilmember...
No question.
Great. All right, we'll move out to the general public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hi, welcome.
Sorry about being so slow. I'm having a bad back day. I would, my name is Eric Peterson, and I would like to take just a few seconds and recognize that this project is a short walk, in my case, a short hobble from where I live in District Five. And note that it is, District Five is very ably represented by Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? All right, we'll go ahead and go. We have one, one member of the public, Monica Andrade. Welcome.
Hello, I just wanted to call in and to support Andrew Sandoval for the work that he's done for not only his district, but throughout Salinas. And Andrew has taken the lead in transparency, leading the...
I, okay, and I apologize. We have moved on from public comment, and we're on the PUD hearing for Northridge Mall. So, thank you for your comment, and if you'd like to, you may email it to the City Council. Does any other member of the public wish to comment on the item for the public hearing and the PUD permit for Northridge Mall? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. We'll come back to council members for final comment and action. I'll start to my right. Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, I want to say thank you to Mr. Wiles, Mr. Grossman, and Ms. Britton. A lot of great work. I just hope if this council does approve it, that we get to work and get it done. With that, I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osorio. We'll go on to Councilmember Osorio for final comment.
Yes, just seeing the planned developments that are going to be done there at that property that's on, where the Northridge Mall is. Just excited to see other projects get approved there. Obviously, it's always been important for us to have economic development here in the city. It's needed. It's vital. So, hopefully, being able to see more projects like this get done. I remember four years ago, the terms streamlining the permitting processes. But I really hope to see that in the, in the next coming years of how the city of Salinas could be more of a partner and being able to streamline these processes and make them faster. So, happy to support it.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, we are going to go on to Councilmember Sandoval. Final comments?
Well, thank you. Earlier, Councilmember Barrera, I think, I don't know. One of our presenters spoke about tax revenue. Well, I'm happy to say Northridge Mall is probably our biggest tax revenue generator other than probably the auto mall. Last year, they brought over $2.1 million, so let's get it up to three. And so, we can provide better services for our community. I'm really excited about this. This is an opportunity for residents to have stores that have never existed before in Salinas. I'm happy to support the item, and I'm happy to help facilitate how we can move forward. I'd also like to acknowledge Lisa Britton and her amazing team, who proactively, you know, with the approval of the council, hired more staff and, you know, streamlining those processes and so we can serve residents better. So, I'm happy to support the item. better. So, I'm happy to support the item.
Excellent. Council member Rocha.
Thank you so much for all of your hard work.
And council member Valenzuela.
Thank you for the work, and I can't wait for this project to get finished.
Excellent. Just a final comment on my end. I'm thrilled that Northridge Mall continues to thrive in an environment nationally where malls are struggling. Our residents continue to use that as a meeting place and a place to go shopping, and very excited about the development. Call for the vote. Council member Barrera?
Yes.
Council member Gonzalez?
Yes.
Council member Osornio?
Yes.
Council member Rocha?
Yes.
Council member Sandoval?
Yes.
Council member Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion passed. Excellent. Thank you. We'll go on to items for consideration. The Alisal District Identity Master Plan. And we have Grant Leonard, our planning manager. Mr. Leonard, I would just ask for succinctness in your presentation. We want to make sure we get through everything.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council members and community. Grant Leonard, and I'm very pleased tonight to present the Alisal District Identity Master Plan to you. This is the next step in implementing the Alisal vibrancy plan. It sort of takes it from the 30,000-foot elevation right down to ground level with some direct actionable items to start revitalizing the community, to continue to revitalize the community. In February of 2023, the city contracted with Urban Fields Studios to prepare the master plan with the city consultation. And with us tonight is our project manager, Jane Lynn, who'll be giving the presentation.
Good evening, city council. I am very pleased to be here. My name is Jane Lynn. I'm an architect and urban designer with Urban Fields Studio, and I had the privilege to work on the Alisal District Identity Master Plan. There we go. The, this is a document that we worked on with also a graphic design team from Volume and also a landscape architect team from SWA, Landscape Architects. As Grant had mentioned, this is related to the AVP, and it really focuses on the goal of strengthening the identity of the district. And we tried to achieve this in many different ways, and it really applies to the, to the area that's shown on the map here. And it really looks at quite a few different components. In the next, sorry, getting used to this thing. Okay, the contents of the ADIMP, I'm just going to shorten it to that, really include public realm design guidelines and streetscape improvements that is related to the Alisal Streetscape Improvement Plan. It includes storefront design guidelines, district graphic identity, public art, and it lists implementation items for, for the community to consider in order to make this a reality. The process really involved quite a lot of people, and I actually recognized that a couple of you have come out to the open house and other community events. It included focus groups, surveys. There was canvassing at local businesses, collaboration in multiple meetings, and it was, a lot of this was done in multilingual contexts. So, it really was, it really involved many people in coming up with different ideas and themes. And, and the first part really talked about the district identity graphic design theme. And so what you see here are three options that were floated to the community and voted on, and one was selected in the end, the, the very top one, and it was modified slightly based on comment from the community. What we're starting to see now is how this is being implemented, and there's quite a few trash receptacles right now that have the branding on them. This is just a pilot program, and producing this could also be applied to banners and to more trash cans along the, along the street to beautify the street and also to start to reinforce that kind of identity. There's currently a call for, a call for art for the photography that goes into this, and so it will be something that the community really is represented by local artists for. Not only is there this, there's also rethinking about how the public realm, and that is all the public spaces that we're, we experience, including the streetscape, could be strengthened to really enhance the identity of the area. And this included looking at three different zones and bringing forward ideas that were developed into the streetscape improvements. The streetscape plan is forthcoming, but many of the ideas really started in the Alisal District Identity Master Plan. It includes many different items like signs, places to walk, connections to the creek, and it really starts to highlight some of the special aspects in the neighborhood. When we think about what this plan addresses, it addresses so many different aspects of what we see when we look on the street. It involves what is at the edges of the street and the building facades, and it involves what is seen on, in the street furniture in, you know, not just trash cans. It could be applied to benches. It's involved in very, in as many aspects as possible that you can see out there. It also, the plan also puts together a toolkit for how to enliven the streetscape and make it a little more, more inviting and attractive and really bring out the best there is in the neighborhood. I want to acknowledge that there have been a lot of really great public improvement projects, and some of these are very visible. And so, they really stem from the Clean California Beautification Grant, and they also include, you can start to see that it's being implemented now. There is more to do, though, and that is what is specified in the plan. This, this plan also really has a chapter that is dedicated to public art and how to involve local artists. This was a big conversation that was a part of the process, and a major component of the district identity is how artists express the story of the neighborhood and how it can be beautified with those stories. We also look at how commercial corridors could be improved as well from the business end. So, small businesses were really involved here, and we really wanted to think about how those small businesses could build together a successful, economically viable, or prosperous neighborhood. And so that included thinking about how to really keep some of these improvements ongoing. And so, one of the major recommendations in the implementation is to study how to, study the feasibility of a business improvement district funding initiative. And this is really the basis for how you can really roll out what could be improved in the plan. Also, a major part of this in helping small businesses is the facade improvement program. You have two items that you'll vote on today. The second one is about the facade improvement program. And this is a program where it helps fund some of the improvements. There's, this part is the pilot, and it really helps merchants figure out how to improve their facades, really give it a facelift. It addresses exterior paint colors. It also addresses awnings and signage and all the things that really go into what you see when you're driving down the street. It's really the businesses that are what we experience as we walk and drive along the corridors. And finally, the, the plan concludes with quite a few items of implementation, and what we have done is tried to give a sense of what that might be. Of course, how that all plays out is, and prioritizes is a matter of discussion. And what is provided here in, in this last chapter, in the implementation chapter, is a little bit more information about how to, what your, what goes behind some of those items in, in consideration for improvements to the, to the Alisal District. And so with that, I wanted to say it was an honor to work on this plan, and we recommend that you adopt a resolution to accept the Alisal District Identity Master Plan as a strategic planning document. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, I will start to my right. Council member Gonzalez, any questions? Okay, council member Barrera, questions?
Yes, Mr. Craig, just to, this has been a call for the community.
Yes, correct. Public outreach was quite robust. We had nine pop-ups. We had multiple stakeholder meetings. We had a design workshop on a Saturday last year, and then the standard presentations to the commissions and committees.
Council member Osornio?
Yeah, I had a question. One of the, and I brought this up in a, in a meeting in the past, but I know that there's talking about, there's talks about a, I think it was called a gateway, a gateway sign. Is that going to be multiple signs, or is it just one big sign? Did this, does the plan identify where and what it's going to be?
So, not specifically. There is a few things to discuss on this. First of all, in the Clean California grant that we have, we have funding for three different monuments, and those are already scoped to be at the Skyway Roundabout, Skyway and Alisal, the Breadbox Recreation Center, and a mural at Cluster Park. Separate from that, there is a budget item within the Alisal Vibrancy Plan, CIP, for a monument to be located within the district. It was originally thought to be along Alisal near the police station, but what the District Identity Master Plan has done is it has identified multiple locations that could be feasible. And really, the next step is to focus on that as a new project to be implemented, work with the community, and select a final location or locations that we could install those monuments.
Great. That's good. I know that that's, that's something, obviously, as being out in the, what Suba District is primarily in the Alisal, but in speaking with a lot of merchants and business owners, they too have felt that, that the Salinas sign, the one that we have here downtown, is something that would be some sort of, you know, touristic, you know, landmark of some sorts. And they give the examples of people going out there and taking photos, going to the Salinas sign, taking photos, but also something just that could be passed along either through social media and things like that. So, I know that that's something that I've been kind of just trying to follow to make sure that myself, but also folks that live in, in District 4 are informed about to be able to weigh in on that. So, I'm looking forward to that. The other, the other, besides the, the monuments, the other question that I had was going to be around the facade improvements. The reason that, that I ask about this is because I, I'm not too sure, but I know that there's certain shopping districts and things like that that might have like color patterns and stuff like that. When, when the study was being conducted, if you go to Alisal Street, you could see a lot of the different vibrant colors that a lot of these business owners have. The signage is, is probably something like I haven't seen in North Salinas or South Salinas or any other parts of town. Is there, is there something here that would make any of those business owners change those colors?
So, actually, the contrary. In thinking about this as a district identity and wanting to respect the heritage and the culture that's there currently, this plan recommends strengthening that.
Oh, that's awesome.
And so, we really want to take what's there and build upon it instead of, you know, changing it to be like the rest of the city. We want to respect the uniqueness of the community.
That's, that's really great. And I'm glad that we have that, obviously, on the record and at this meeting, because, I mean, some of these buildings that go there, these really big buildings and like a fiery red color and orangish. And so, I think that's awesome, because I feel like that, that's what folks out there identify with. The, the last question would be just more specifically about the, the funding of the pilot program. Is there a timeline? I know that, that at the end of the report, it, it gives a general timeline of one to two years, but do you know in what order the $600,000 for the funding of the pilot program might be put online? And the only reason I ask is because I know that, that it's been a discussion point, even I think after COVID, of some monies that the city was able to give, whether it was, can't remember if it was grants that were forgiven or something like that. But I know that if you still go to the Alisal right now and any of those merchants that are on East Alisal, Sanborn, or even Market, they still talk about this, the facade improvements. So, do you know in what order this might be able to be rolled out?
Yes, absolutely. So, as Jane mentioned, there are two items tonight in the two staff reports. And so, in the second staff report, that's specific to the facade improvement program. And you're correct, in previous capital improvement program budgets, $600,000 has already been allocated to this program. It was paused so that we could complete the District Identity Master Plan to make sure we had the toolkit and the guidelines. With these, once they're adopted, the plan is to move forward in either December or January with rolling out that program as the next major initiative for the AVP.
That's really great to hear. Yeah, I've been, that, that I, I feel confident that a lot of the business owners that can, that can take part in that would be very, very, very appreciative of that. I know I said that was the last question, but in looking at the, the trash cans there, is, would it be more appropriate as, as the, as it moves along a little bit further? Because I know that this is like the first report, or the, the first report where we're talking more specifically about the results from the study. But have we already identified the frequency of when these trash cans will be emptied and who will be doing it? I know that there's, there was question if the city would be doing it, and if it was Republic Services would be doing it. And then even that, now that there's like Hope Services and Downtown Streets Team that are out there, then maybe they would be. Is that, is that a question for tonight, or maybe is that something that we put on the calendar and ask at a later time?
No, that's fine. We can answer that now. It's part of our commercial corridor cleanup program. The city contracts with both Downtown Streets Team, Inc., and Hope Services, and that's to pick up debris and trash that's on the sidewalk or in the gutters. They then either dispose of that on-site through one of the public trash cans, or they put it into their truck and take it off to the transfer station. The new trash corrals that have been installed as part of the Clean California Grant are being serviced by Republic Services. They're currently gray, but as Jane mentioned, we're going to have a call for art to have them branded and wrapped with either local photography or local artwork.
Thank you so much. No further questions, mayor.
Thank you. Council member Sandoval, questions? Okay, council member Rocha, council member Valenzuela. All right, we'll go out to the public. Does any member of the public wish to comment on this item? Hang on with me one quick moment.
I'll hang.
No, no, I was going to say, you, you came up first. We'll.
We're both slow.
It's okay.
We earned it.
It gives her some time.
Well, I'll be, I'll be quick. My name is Eric Peterson, and to pick up on one of the things Orlando said, I go a lot of places. I see a lot of signs. And a lot of communities, cities, districts, like the Rose Garden in San Jose, have signs identifying them, and it's really neat. You get someplace and there's something there. It's not just blah, city. And that, years ago, and maybe Mary Ann, we want to talk about this one too. Mary Ann, well, years ago, Janet Barnes was on the city council, and she cooked up some kind of plan for artwork on our streets. And I don't remember the details, and I don't remember why it fell through, but it was, would have been a good thing to beautify. So, there's all sorts of options. It's cost money, or in her case, I think she was going to get them donated. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Mary Ann Worden. I lived out on 28 South Hebron when I first moved to town, so I know what that area was. Now, I'm also on the historical commission for Monterey County. Now, when this first started talking about this plan for Alisal, I was very enthused about it, because I know the history of it, because I've walked every street there for many years for our church. I got to know the people that came here from the other states and their stories. I've also asked, and I've brought pictures from other towns that tell the story of the people migrating into towns. And I still have them. And lately, I've been going through all my old boxes. going through all my old boxes. And it's interesting what I've been finding about our city and our city council and all the commissions that I've been a part of. And it's interesting to see some of these things that never went forward after they were passed by planning commissions and city councils. It's very interesting. And I've got them. So, if you want some history of, especially the Alisal, I have it. I also have pictures. But you need to go to the library and get the history of there, because it is there by the people that lived there, but even before I did. And part of that history should be out in the Alisal. Because we had a lot of Air Force, I mean, well, yes, from the, that were going, oh, lived there in those camps there, they were training to be pilots. And we also have the Ford Ore people that lived out in the Alisal. And I got to know all their stories.
Thank you.
And it, some of that should be there, and you should recognize them, because they worked hard to make the Alisal the area that it was.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Warden. Hi, welcome.
Good evening, City Council Madam Mayor. Luis Chago Juarez, we're Building Healthy Communities. And yeah, just to echo Ms. Mary Ann Warden's testimony to the history, it's a deep history. And just as we've got to witness tonight, with a tribal chairwoman recognizing this land as once recognized as the Ensen, the Alisal too was, for some generations, was recognized as the East Side. I say that because if you go to East San Jose, you go to several other communities around California, you know, you, like East San Jose, for example, there's, it's, it's either Mayfair or Alum Rock, East San Jose, or Salsi Puedes, right? Multiple, multiple identities. And I know, I know with, with more conversations, we'll be able to supplement all the identities and get to see that fleshed out with this committee, which I am a part of and really, really commend, you know, all the efforts that they've been able to put forward. And with that, you know, just hoping that, that we can see, we could see a line item for that in, in this year's, this coming budget, this year's coming budget. So, something that will, will at least be able to supplement these efforts. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, David Masonev. Just an idea to throw out there. I, down, I, I grew up in Los Angeles area, and sometimes you couldn't tell one part of the city from another city. And what they ended up doing was they started putting emblems on the street signs. So, for example, if you went to Redondo Beach, they had a sailboat, a little sailboat there. I would think that that would be another way of designating different areas to the city, not dividing the city, but just saying, hey, here's, here's Alisal. And maybe you, you have farmworkers out in the fields or something. I mean, I don't know. But it's, it's something to think about. And, because there's, there's basically three areas in Salinas, and they all need to be recognized. So, anyway, that's just an idea.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hello again. I guess I have a lot to say tonight. I just want to say that this plan looks absolutely fantastic. When I moved here in 1982, one of the things that made me feel at home was El Alisal. The food, the people, and the color. And so, I hope that that will be kept in the, in the, the plan and respected. But a quick thing that I just want to comment on that was, is missing, that I see is missing from everything are bike lockers and off-road bike paths that allow people who do not drive and who maybe don't have access to public transportation to be able to move across the barrier that exists from the railroad tracks and the freeway to the, quote, "East Side." And I noticed that, but our schools, our institutions, our downtown areas and shopping areas do not have anywhere where people can store bikes. Those little round thingamajiggies, dude, they just don't work. Right? Your bike will be stolen in a heartbeat. It'll be disappeared, unfortunately. So, I'm just wondering if that could be part of our planning for not only the downtown Salinas, but other shopping areas where people have to work and commute from El Alisal to other parts, including the college where I teach, where I would like to be able to see people who want to be green, be able to, to have access to off-road and safe travel, but also a way to store their bikes while they're in school or shopping or working. Because if we want to be green, we have to be thinking about these things. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Go ahead and close public comment. We'll go over to Zoom. Does any member of the public on Zoom wish to comment on this item? We do have one hand raised, two hands raised. We'll start with Omar Perez. Welcome, Omar. You have two minutes.
Hello, my name is Omar. I'm a member of the AVP Implementation Committee. And I want to start off and say thank you for the current council and their years of service. Really sad to see some of y'all leave the leadership at the city level. So, appreciate your time there. But I did want to say that this identity plan has been something that's been going on for, with AVP for a very long time. It's been a lot of hard work and want to come out and support for this master plan. This is just one step in a larger part of that plan and just another example why we need to continue to fund the Alisal Vibrancy Plan. So, incoming council members and incoming mayor, please continue to find ways to fund and continue to support the AVP. This is a community-led and community-driven plan, and a lot, a lot of community input has been in, been, been implemented to this plan and a lot of thought has been put into it. So, yeah, just want to say in full support of this. Thank you.
Thank you. And we also have Alejandro Chavez. Hi, welcome. You have two minutes.
Thank you. I don't think I'll take the, the two minutes, but I just want to reiterate what I said in our letter that we sent through Suba. So, what we said there was just we are in support of the plan, and we've been part of this plan as well as many of our members. The, the one thing that I wanted to just talk about really quickly is, I think something that Chago mentioned is putting a line item or putting budget towards items that come before us. Here in the city of Salinas, for the master plan is to continue to support some of these items that are through the AVP plan, but in particular, the work that was done through the District Identity Plan. And I think that's, that, I just wanted to add that to my few sense of making certain that there's an investment in the area and that that hopefully continues on with the city council and the city. So, thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. All right, we will come back to council members for final comment and action. And the city attorney has advised me that consideration item 24-631 and 24-648 should be a motion together. So, we'll be voting on both items. I will start to my right, Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you. You know, really excited about this master plan, because I feel that it provides a roadmap for a very necessary investment. You know, through initiatives like this, we're combating years of neglect and lack of investment in Alisal. So, when I see that there is a organized push that is community-driven, that does have resident feedback, community feedback, it's, it's all the more easier to support. I've, I have been really excited to see this growing support for this and how much of it has been grassroots-led. So, wanting to very much extend gratitude to our community partners and would like to reiterate the call for funding. You know, these, these programs and these master plans, they, they take city staff time, and it, it takes funding and budget in order to make sure that there is actual follow-through and implementation. So, I'm very happy to support the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barrera.
Yes, I want to thank Mr. Leonard, Mr. Descendus, and Ms. Lynn. I, I've seen you out there in the community as well, meeting with the people, true investment in this project. You know, I know we talk about farmworkers today, but as, as I'm, as I'm listening to several of you, I'm thinking about the Cluster family. The Cluster family came from Denmark. They were dairy farmers. They invested in the Alisal. It was home. Not only did, they weren't rich, but they were working people, but very successful dairy family. They decided to invest, and they said, we want to donate a park to the county of Monterrey, and some property for the Catholic Church. Beautiful story. Not only have we have, York Jen was a big player in our community. We have Japanese, Chinese, you know, the people, remember, that came all the way from the Midwest because of the Dust Bowl. Mr. John Steinbeck wrote a lot about these people. I would like to make a motion to approve this. Mr. City Manager, I, I would need assistance here. As far as the line item that they were talking about for funding, in the motion, I would like to put something together. That way it doesn't get lost. How would you recommend me doing this?
You can just give me direction and bring it back.
Excuse me?
To the mayor, I think you can just give me direction or work with the team and bring, bring the line items back.
Yes, I want, I want to make sure that the funding is in place and it doesn't get lost.
Yeah.
Because if you heard, this thing started back in 1982. Great, and I remember a little bit about Ms. Councilmember Janet Barnes bringing it together. But sometimes we discuss things and it gets lost somewhere. So, I want to make sure that your help is always there.
Yeah, I think just direction and both the team has been really cognizant of taking concrete actions to move it forward.
Yes, thank you. So, I want to make a motion to approve this project.
All right, we have a motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio. We'll go on to Councilmember Osornio for final comment.
Just, just so that I, I, I don't want to get confused here, but can I get clarification on the, on the motion here from Councilmember Barrera? Because it, it, down here it says approve a resolution to the implementation of the Alisal Vibrancy Plan in the amount to not exceed $600,000, including the, okay. So, City Manager, is there a way that, because if you look at here, it says the total short-term funding is 1.5 million? Is there a reason why we couldn't just bake that number into this motion, 1.5 million?
You, I don't have a funding source. I would like to, I would like to just get direction and maybe Grant can help me out, and we can bring it back to you. I think that would be the cleanest way, so we can lay out for a second, third, fourth, or whatever, and really tie the funding to the actual tasks. Because that, that's what I'm hearing. I'm hearing, let's not let this get lost. So, I don't know if Grant wants to help me out, but I think that would be kind of be better.
Yeah, I agree. I think on the motion for the facade improvement program, that's specific to the money that's been allocated already and, and
Yep.
and the guidelines for that program. And then, the implementation recommendations and district identity are things to look at through the next budget cycle. And so, when we talk about the next CIP funding, the next budget, we'll look back at this program, and that's where we'll know how to make that ask and the allocation from the council.
So, so City Manager, I think we all have trust in, in you. And, and just to know, just like some of the folks that were saying here in public comment, it was, these plans have always been, as Councilmember Barrera says, have always been sitting on the shelf, collecting dust. And there hasn't been really a lot of implementation. So, I think that's just where I'm coming from as far as wanting to make sure the funding goes. But I'll go ahead and I'll, I'll take your recommendation to see that this item comes back to make sure there's funding for implementation at a later time.
I think as an addition, you know, we, we shared with you Sophie's kind of work on trying to track our projects and our programs. This would be one of them.
Okay.
So, part of the idea would be, once we, we list it out, you'll be able to go in and click sort of the progress. And then, once we get the funding attached to it, you'll see that as well. So, I think that's where we're heading. That's been a very clear direction of this council for a few months. It just takes a bit to get there to work through all this. But you'll start seeing this, a lot more proact, more proact, pro, I can't even talk, more action-oriented budgets and everything when it comes to our plans.
Then, then I'll go ahead and just fully support the, the motion that's on the floor. Thank you. No further comments.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, we have a motion and a second. I'll continue on for final comment. Councilmember Sandoval.
Amazing work. I think this is the first time I met Lisa. She's shaking her head yes. And she assured me, I don't know how many years ago, 2017 maybe, at the firehouse station, she assured me this was going to go forward and there was going to be funding. So, I commend your entire team, to the consultants. I would like to also, for future consideration, the bike lockers. As someone who used to bike and have his bike stolen several times, I think that that would be a very good thing. You, you'll notice that there is not a lot of use across our city with the very few places that actually have those, even in schools. You know, they're just, people just don't feel safe leaving them there. So, I think that, that is something that warrants discussion. Thank you.
Councilmember Rocha, final comments?
Yeah, I, I want to thank you for all of your work, and I want to thank this council for their consistent support for these investments. When I first got on the city council, one of the first interviews that I did was with KION, when they, when they presented a report done by UC Berkeley that had identified the city of Salinas as one of the most segregated metropolitan areas in the country. And when I bring that up, a lot of people tend to get uncomfortable, because they assume that, you know, there's blame to be, you know, assigned or fingers to be pointed. But really, what reports like those do is they provide an opportunity to policymakers to take much-needed action to reverse those decisions and make investments for the betterment of those communities moving forward, those communities that were significantly impacted by decades of segregation and lack of investment. And certainly, this puts us on track towards making that much-needed, long-overdue investment in the Alisal. And so, thank you for all of your work, and it's all incumbent on the community to continue to advocate for the continued investment for this plan. Thank you so much. Happy to support.
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Just an amazing job as somebody that was working at Building Healthy Communities when this was just a thought. To see it now is amazing, right? And this plan is an example of two things. One, amazing community engagement, amazing job on that, but also governing for racial equity. So, this is what equity looks like. And I know that I will continue to push to make sure this keeps getting funded, right? Whether I'm not on the council or not, but I'm still going to continue to advocate for this. So, thank you.
Thank you. My final comments, certainly the Alisal Vibrancy Plan has been in play for now 12, 13 years, if I remember correctly. I am thrilled that there's a commercial facade improvement pilot program. I, you know, as my time ticks down, I also just want to get in that I do think that there should be some consideration for a property-based improvement district for the Suba area. We did it for downtown, and it was incredibly successful. I would love to be able to see a, a property-based improvement district for that particular area to also assist in the vibrancy of our business districts in the Alisal. With that, I have no further comments. Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass. Excellent. Thank you. All right, we have a complicated council consent agenda. There are a few items on the agenda. We're going to go ahead and pull ID 657, the minutes, and they have been continued to December 3rd. We have an, an update or a, yeah, we have an update on 633. Do you want to address that now, or?
So, with respect to item 633, Mayor, you have a revised resolution on the dais, and we just want to make sure that the action you take tonight reflects the revised resolution that's on the dais.
And in item 651, I'll need to recuse myself. The rent stabilization ordinance affects a property I own, and in an abundance of caution, I'll recuse myself. But it's my understanding we also have an update to that item as well. Do I need to be outside of the room to acknowledge the update?
If that's correct, Mayor, both you and Councilmember Valenzuela.
Okay, so, we're going to hold off on 651 very briefly, and we will go back to just acknowledge any items pulled for discussion. I will start to my right, Councilmember Gonzalez. Okay, Councilmember Barrera.
Madam Mayor, just 670, I need to make a comment on that.
Okay. Councilmember Osornio?
No items, Madam Mayor. Oh, you know what, if I can just pull 670, please.
Okay. Councilmember Sandoval?
670 in
670 and 673.
Okay. Councilmember Rocha?
It will be 670.
Okay.
No items.
All right, and I have no items, so I'll need a motion to, to approve the remaining items. Oh gosh, I'm sorry. I got a whole audience that I forgot to ask. I apologize. Any member of the public wish to pull an item? Yes, sir. Okay, we'll go to Zoom. Any member of the public wish to pull an item on consent? If so, please use the raise hand function. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment. And I apologize, could I get a motion to approve the remaining items? That's a motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio on 655, 570, 652, 633, 660, 662, 664. And we will pull the other items. Call for the vote, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass. Okay, we will go on to I, item 672. Mr. Mason, have you pulled this item?
Thank you. I just want to give you a warning. I'm going to come up here every, every meeting and bring this up until we start seeing a breakdown of what these costs go to. Not who they go to, but what they go to. I don't know how you can approve expenditures when there's nothing attached to it. It's like, oh, we're going to give this person $5,000, but we're not going to tell you why we're giving him $5,000. There's no way to be transparent, there's no way to keep account. It needs to be put out for the public as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll need a motion to approve 672.
Prove.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Barrera, seconded by Councilmember Osornio on 672. Call for the vote. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass. Okay, thank you. All right, on to ID 670, the Baronda Road congestion relief project. Councilmember Barrera, you pulled this item.
Thank you. You know, I just want to make a comment. We did receive a few emails regarding the safety of, whether it's children, people crossing that corridor, it's very unsafe. So there's a lot of concerns from some of the people. I would like to see if it's possible to respond to these individuals that have taken the time to email because those are concerns. They're wondering what's the safety measures for children or even anyone that's going to cross the street because it's a super busy intersection. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go on to Councilmember Osornio. You also pulled this item.
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on those comments. There's also been several folks that have reached out to me about the concerns about making sure that these roundabouts are safe. They compared it to some roundabouts that have been, that have been constructed in other parts of, of, of the region and just really wanting to make sure that, that these are done, that are, that have appropriate signage and, and, and I guess very clear with lines and safety features. So I just wanted to be on the record saying that with my colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval, you also pulled this item?
Yes, yeah, David, could you address some of the concerns that we've received from residents? I know, you know, with the traffic continuously moving, there's concerns that that will be unsafe for kids. There's also been concerns about the safety precautions or the safety measures that'll be installed for that. Could you speak to that, please?
Yes, so there has been studies on roundabouts. They are, they tend to be safer mainly because of the speed through the, through the roundabouts is slower. You have to slow down to, to go into them, so accidents between vehicles and pedestrians that are slower speed. Also, when a pedestrian enters a roundabout, he only has to pay attention to one direction. He doesn't have to worry about both directions because there's a landing zone as you move through the roundabout. So you cross one section and you can look the other direction and cross that section. It's also the, the crossing distance is a lot shorter in a roundabout than a regular intersection. And then also this particular roundabout, during construction, we have an outreach coordinator that's doing outreach with the, with the school and meeting on a regular basis in terms of as the phases go through, how they're looking to make sure that the children say, cross safely during construction. And after construction, we're also putting flashing beacons up at the crosswalk so that drivers know that there's a pedestrian coming into the crosswalk.
Can you talk about, a little bit about the, are, are those specs available that we could share with residents? Or is that something that's in the design phase or what are we?
Yeah, we're, it's completely designed and we out to bid and, you know, for example, you know, no one's going to be able to see this, but, but this is what, what's being installed in there and I can easily send that to council members to show them, this is what's being installed. It's similar to what's out here on Alisal for the county workers that are crossing the street.
Okay, great. And then you had mentioned there was going to be an outreach consultant. Is that information you could share with the public now, who that will be or who the contact will be or how will we get that information?
Yeah, we have, we have a consultant onboard that's doing public outreach. Sophie's in, in contact with them to make sure that city is involved in that outreach and that we're doing appropriate amount of outreach for those. And again, we can include you on, on anything that goes out so that you're aware that, that we are doing it.
Yeah, thank you. I'd appreciate participating in those community meetings as well or whatever I could do to support that. There was some seniors who reached out about, you know, this might be their first experience with roundabouts. So is there a tutorial or 3D rendition or what can we do to help educate? Because this is something new for a lot of people.
Well, again, we, we do have, we do have three in the city of Salinas right now. We have the, the one on Alisal, we have, the Barden Road has a dual roundabouts there. So there's opportunities to actually drive them and be familiar with them. But it is a learning process and again, as you enter the roundabout, it is a very slow process to get through it. Probably when it first opens up, the traffic's going to be backed up because people are hesitant about moving through. But as they get to learn it, they'll start flowing a little bit better. But there is always a learning curve with, with new construction like that.
All right, my, my last request or question is, you know, it's right, I mean, that, that intersection is literally, the only people who are going to cross it are students and parents getting kids to school. So I know a long time ago, the city used to fund, they used to have crossguards. And I know the responsibility is now the schools for crossguards, but I guess there's some kind of confusion about what they're able to do as far as off campus. So maybe a discussion with the school district about that. I just want to make sure that those students are safe. So I'm sure that'll, that'll come forward in the future discussions, right?
Yep. As, as we meet with the school, they'll bring their, their concerns through to us and, and we'll work through it as, as it comes up. But again, we, we do want to be on the safe side on, on that project when it does open up.
All right, thanks. If you could just share the renditions of the safety precautions, that way I could share those with those folks. Thank you very much.
Okay, Councilmember Rocha, you also pulled this item.
And I have no questions, David. I just have comments. But I just want to take a moment to, tying the comment to this item as it relates to the safety of students on Baronda Road. Prior to, our prior city manager leaving, we did have a education outreach subcommittee. And one of the things that we were discussing at the time was some sort of a cost sharing program with school districts for the crossing guards. So that way, they wouldn't necessarily be employees of the city, rather employees of the district, but the city could contribute some way or another towards funding those positions. So just something to put on the city manager's radar about for, the potential for this. I also want to take a moment to thank this city council and our city staff for all of your work on this. It was not an easy feat to get to where we're at now. We started this project, it's been many, many years in the making, you know, but really when I got on the city council in 2020, at the time, those $12 million set aside for this project. And I remember at the time when we had the discussion about the spendable fund balance, the then city manager, Steve Kerrigan, and I were talking about ways to make this project a reality and the city council approved an increase of $5 million towards this project, which really allowed us to move forward a lot quicker. And then most recently approved another $5 million for it. So this has been really a project this council and our staff and our two city managers have taken very seriously to get to where we're at now and we're already starting on the project. But just something to bring up to the members that will continue to be on this council moving forward is we do not have funding for the second and third phase of the project. So something to keep in mind, top priorities for the city moving forward to make sure that this project is completed entirely. But thank you so much to everyone who played a role in this and thank you to the council for your support for this. Happy to move the item for approval.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Rocha, seconded by Councilmember Sandoval. Call for the vote on 670, please. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes.
Mayor Craig?
Yes.
Motion pass. Okay, ID 673, we have Councilmember Sandoval, or excuse me, I'm going to go out to the member of the public. Mr. Mason, have you pulled this item?
Yeah, it kind of goes along with the, the last thing I was stepping up here about. I'm feeling, I, I read through this and it feels like we're giving a $250,000 carte blanche to the city manager. Don't take that personal.
That's fine.
But it seems like if we're not willing to itemize what we're spending money for on, on a normal basis, is this going to be something that's going to be used and kind of disappeared and get sucked into the, the system and we're not going to know what's going on? So I just, that's my only concern. I think it increases the liability to the city manager. When the city council has to approve things, they're taking responsibility along with the city manager. That's a good thing. But when you increase the amount of money he can spend without getting it approved, that's, then you're taking that, that liability and placing it highly on, on him. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have Councilmember Sandoval.
Is that another public comment?
Well, I normally ask for you to pull the item ahead of time, but I will absolutely...
Oh, I didn't, I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm going to give you two minutes.
You've got to forgive me, I'm going deaf. Already am. Mary Ann Warden, I was a part of this project from when we first started, when Baronda was called Holly Street.
Ms. Warden, we've already voted on that item. We're actually on the purchasing authority at this point.
I was going to say, we voted for four, and this never came, and it was voted and, and passed by you people years ago.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I will come back to Councilmember Sandoval. You also pulled this item?
Sure, I just, I'll make some comments and then I'll hand over the floor to the city manager or finance director. But, you know, for me, I understand the intention behind this. I know they did, you did a great comparison with other cities. You know, one of my questions for the city manager was, you know, have we come across a specific project, and maybe now that he's had time to research it, that we've needed, that this would have helped mitigate or, or address? And I, I personally like lower minute, lower limits. Unless it was really hindering the city moving forward in progress, I, I prefer having an opportunity to have more accountability and being able to review those items. But, you know, I'm open to have you share.
Thank you.
If you'd like to, yes.
Thank you, Councilmember Sandoval, Selena Andrews, Finance Director. So the reason we're bringing this forward is because, for, for a lot of, a few reasons actually, we, it has not been, the, the purchasing ordinance has not been updated since 2016 and that's, that's quite some time ago. And those authorities have not been adjusted for inflation. So it has created inefficiencies internally. It does take quite a bit of staff time to produce reports, to bring reports to council. Now, we have all of the checks and balances in place originally. A, the city puts together a budget and the city manager presents that for approval. And within those approvals are line items, pretty much. So everything is identified. There wouldn't be any authority beyond that. And the authority, the 250,000 really addresses the smaller projects. Anything over 250,000 would still come to council for, for approval as, as per usual. So there really wouldn't be, the only difference would just essentially be less staff time spent on reports so we can focus on city priorities.
Thank you. And I'm just provide the city manager a question, just so we can address David's concerns. It's not necessarily that you'll have free rein to create projects or spend the money. Just can you give a little explanation on that?
Yeah, thank you. And totally appreciate the, the spirit of the question. So it's really the council, what you're comfortable with. It doesn't give free rein. So the budget is the controlling document. Contracts still have to go through, through legal, the city attorney. Finance still has to sign off on the budget, the financing. I have no access to any of that. HR, for example, still has to look at, so all the, all the different checks are there. And typically what's going to happen is the department head, it's going to be a project not in the city manager's office. The city manager really doesn't trigger a capital works project, we're really, really managing parks. So a department head will be bringing something forward, get through all the checks and balances, and then it would get to me. So by the time it gets to me, it's gone through several reviews. So that's really the, the authority provided. Right now, that happens up to the 100,000 though. That's happening today. So this will happen up to 250. If the council wants me to bring something back in the future, see kind of how much, how has this worked, I can certainly do that. But it's really up to the councils and what you think is appropriate. We are a 250 million dollar plus city, as you saw in the data that was done, this is not uncommon. Now, but it's really up to your tolerance, your confidence. But all the checks and balances are there. Really, very rarely does the city manager actually initiate a project, capital projects or a parks improvement or a CDD contract or anything. That happens with the departments and it comes, it works itself up for my signature.
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Yeah, maybe we can get a, an update on, on what projects, you know, how that affected. And my, my second, just a general comment is, you know, when I first came on council, I, meeting with our previous finance director, I realized that our financial system is very outdated. And so that makes it really difficult for us to pull reports and, and, and has the appearance of not being transparent, but sometimes that data is just very difficult to classify. And so I don't know if that's on the horizon for, yes, city manager's giving me nod for an update on that because that would really help address a lot of the concerns and help us be better council members and provide good oversight. And also, can we reach out to David about the, you know, the way our expenditures work and, and get a little bit of clarification? I mean, we want to make sure that the community feels comfortable with what we're doing. Thank you very much. And with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Councilmember Sandoval, seconded by Councilmember Barrera. Call for the vote on 673. Councilmember Barrera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Rocha?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Councilmember Valenzuela.
Yes.
Mayor Craig.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Excellent, thank you, all right. Council, I'm going to go on to the next item, which is closed session, knowing that we have an outstanding ID on six five one, but it allows us to get through the agenda and then we'll, councilmember Valenzuela and I will recuse ourselves and exit, and then Mayor Protem Anthony Rocha can take item six five one and close the meeting, if that's okay.
Mayor.
Yes.
Yeah, but we got people that just came for this seven o'clock. We can't address that right now?
So the, the.
No, the seven o'clock.
So it's a seven o'clock posted hearing, so we start that meeting at seven. That's when we've announced.
That was very common to how we did all the other rents, all the other items, we timed it at seven. So the idea would be you go into close at six thirty, you break at seven. So it would be, we can't, and the city attorney can help me out, but we timed it at seven. So that's where I think we need to hear that item. And that was very similar to the way we did the other rent stabilization. That's why I just landed on seven.
Thank you.
Okay, so with that, I'm going to just make the acknowledgement that we have pending litigation for closed session on California Government Code 54956.9D1. Does any member of the public have a comment on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and I will go ahead and recuse myself for the consent item six five one, because I have, let's see, where's my little note? Hang on, I want to make sure I say all the right things. I have rent stabilization ordinance affects a property I own, and in an abundance of caution, I'll recuse myself.
And due to the fact that I was part of an organization that was pushing for rent stabilization, I will also be recusing myself.
So to be clear, I am recusing myself from consent item ID six five one, as well as the public hearing at seven o'clock for twenty four dash six seven one.
And I will be recusing myself from those two items as well.
Excellent, thank you. Hang on one second. My city manager is, so public comment on Zoom for closed session, I did not. So hold with me one second, we'll go over to public comment on Zoom. Does any member of the public wish to comment on the closed session item? All right, seeing none. I'm handing over the meeting to Mayor Protem, councilmember, Mayor Protem Rocha. Thanks.
I like the way that sounds.
Thank you.
All right, did any member of the city council request to pull that item for a separate vote or discussion? Did any, no, oh, okay, did any member of the public request to pull that item for separate vote or discussion? I don't believe so, right?
Right.
Okay, so then we'll entertain a motion now.
Would you approve? Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded with the motion from councilmember Barrera and second from councilmember Sandoval for approval.
If I may, Mayor Protem, we just need to make sure that we are clear about what we're voting on. There is a revised staff report and resolution on your dais, and this reflects a change that was made to the terms of the agreement, which are also attached. And we want to make sure that you're approving the correct thing, so I wanted to make sure that we pointed that out for the record.
And do the makers of the motion accept the clarification made by the city attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll now call for the vote.
Councilmember Barrera.
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio.
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Rocha.
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you, we will now adjourn into closed session. All right, so we have a quorum of the council present, everyone. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. We're going to reconvene into open session for our public hearing. We have ID twenty four six seven one, Establishment of Rent Stabilization Program Fee Amendment of Rental Registration Fee, Approval of Fiscal Year Twenty Four Twenty Five Rental Registration and Rent Stabilization Program Budget, and General Fund Loan Transfer and Workforce Allocation Modification. And we have our Director of Community Development, Lisa Brinton, here to do the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and city council members. The item before you identifies outlines and actions that are required for us to move forward with implementing two ordinances. The rental registration program, which was adopted by the city council in April of 2023, and the more recently adopted rent stabilization program ordinance was adopted in September 2024. As part of ordinance preparation, the city had contracted with Economic Planning Systems, EPS, to prepare a fee study that helped guide.
One quick minute. To our city clerk, can you do an announcement, just letting people know that there's translation services available? Sorry, I forgot that part.
Para los miembros del público que necesitan traducción en español, los, los, los devices de traducción están disponibles en la entrada de la rotunda y podemos asistir sin esta ayuda con esos. Gracias.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. So EPS was contracted to prepare a fee study that looked at staffing, program costs, fees that would be required to implement a combined program, a combined rental registration and rent stabilization program, to ensure ultimately achieving cost neutrality. So post ordinance adoption, the city entered into a second agreement with EPS for them to conduct additional analysis to refine their recommendations regarding staffing allocation, cost and fees, as well as an anticipated timing for reaching a cost neutral status. There we go. So the first piece was staffing. So the fee study that was presented in September recommended 5.1 full-time equivalent positions to staff a combined program. After discussion with EPS and additional interviews with jurisdictions that had stood up similar programs, it was refined that program staffing to at least initially start up the program, recommended staffing is 3.2 full-time equivalents. Now currently, we already have on staff a planning manager, as well as a community development analyst, which is, was hired for the rental registration program. So part of the action to move forward with implementation is approving an augmentation to the community development department workforce allocation, adding two FTE as administrative positions, one administrative analyst and one administrative aide. As staff begin to build out the program budget, having established staffing, we looked at other costs such as the software, the platform, the database that would house, collect and house the information being collected, as well as supportive services that would be required for ordinance implementation. And that includes a hearing officer and education outreach, other mediation services, as well as other indirect costs that would be encumbered by the city. So the proposed fiscal year twenty four twenty five budget, which would start with program implementation in January of 2025 through the fiscal year June 30th, 2025, is estimated to actually be $732,350. However, we are able to offset funding sources for the community development analysts, because they are already being paid through another funding source. So that brings our budget for the first six months to $655,250. The original fee study proposed two fees. The first fee was for those units that are subject to the rental registration ordinance, and that's approximately 14,400 units within the city. They further recommended that those units subject to the rent stabilization ordinance, and that's about 8,330 units, would then be assessed a registration fee of $115. Staff ran some analysis and determined that posed problems for cost neutrality based on multiplying these fee rates by the subject units, as well as our projected collection rates. So we ran a spreadsheet, which I will share in the upcoming slide, using a 30% collection rate, up to a 90% collection rate, and found that at the conservative 30% collection rate, the general fund would need to support the program in this first three months with over $300,000. And given that the program is intended to be self-sustaining, we did ask EPS to revisit their fee analysis to minimize the gap between program expenses and revenues collected and expenses. So when they did that, they came, one more, go back. They recommended that the fees be increased to $45 per rental unit subject to the rental registration ordinance, and $170 per unit for those subject to the rent stabilization ordinance. And their table, which I'll show you here in a moment, shows that in year three, at a 50% collection rate, which is still fairly conservative, we would reach cost neutrality. We might need new batteries. Okay, so this is staff's original analysis showing that, based on the collection of ordinance fees, subtracting a cash carryover that we have from current rental registration fees that we've already collected from past year, as well as salary offset for the community development analyst. The general fund, if we were to base the fees on the original $28 for rental registration and $115 for rent stabilization, the general fund would need to contribute 310, over $310 just for this first six-month period. And that we would have to achieve close to an 80% collection rate and participation rate to reach cost neutrality and not have a burden to the general fund. So EPS revised analysis is shown here on this slide and is an attachment to the report. And it shows the calculations with the increased fees of $45 for rental registration units and $170 for rent stabilization units. And it shows that here, can I point it over here? That in year three, you have cost neutrality. So your fees collected exceed your expenses, meet or exceed your expenses. So part of the action that is being requested is that even with this cost increase for the first six months, at a very conservative collection rate of 30%, and bear in mind that currently our rental registration collection rates are about 46%. So we're trying to be very conservative and come upfront with any ask that we think the general fund would need to contribute, would be just over $205,000. And this would be in the form of a loan transfer. So should we have higher participation than the 30% rate? And the program is more successful, let's say we're at 50 or 60%, then the funds would be repaid back to the general fund. Once the program cost was considered neutral and expenses covered with the fees collected, any additional funds that were not needed from that transfer would be then returned to the general fund. So as mentioned, these four items are required for us to move forward with ordinance implementation. And it also furthers the city council goals of promoting and preserving housing, especially affordable housing in our community. And the adoption of this, their three resolutions are not considered a project under SEQA. So the motion that there are three resolutions, actually, that you're being asked to take action on. The first resolution is to establish a rent program fee, and this is for the rent stabilization ordinance. And the recommended amount is $170 per subject unit. And again, that's 8,330 units we're estimating are subject to this ordinance. It does provide the provision that we will be regularly revisiting the fees. And in fact, as part of the twenty five, twenty six budget, we will revisit the budget and set a new budget for twenty five, twenty six, as well as adjust fees accordingly, based on our collection rates. The second resolution is to amend the previously established residential registration fees. In April of 23, there was a sliding scale that was adopted, ranging from $20 for a single unit up to $350 for apartment complexes that had more than 100 units. And so the recommended amount in this resolution would be $45 for those units subject to rental registration. The third resolution takes care of establishing our budget for the next six months at $655,250. And then it also authorizes the appropriation of the $205,203 in the form of a general fund loan transfer to the program, as well as approves an amended workforce allocation for the community development department to add the two administrative positions, the administrative analyst and administrative aide. And so with that, questions?
Thank you so much for your presentation. We're going to go ahead and open it up to questions from the council, and we'll start with councilmember Osornio.
No questions.
Councilmember Barrera.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Brinton, on the two first positions, planning manager and community development analyst, just curious, you said they're already working for you? So I keep hearing that we're short-staffed in different departments. So that means it's going to be a different responsibility. So what hap, or are they going to be doing both jobs?
Yeah, so Alexis, would you mind, please bring up the slide? My apologies, I got eager, my clicking and clicked myself out of the presentation. But if you look at this slide, it's, it will break down that 0.2% of the planning manager's time will be oversight. So this is the planning manager for the Housing and Community Development Division, which also sees our homeless services. So this fraction of a percentage of their time will be providing the oversight. The full-time community development analyst, they are already working on the rental registration program and other fair housing initiatives, including rapid rehousing. And so one of EPS's recommendations was that the programs be merged. So her activities will then merge to just bring in the rent stabilization.
And thank you for that. So once this program's up and running, let's just suppose a tenant has concerns when they come to the, wherever this group is going to be stationed at, will there be an individual or individuals that will be able to address their concerns?
Yes, so in standing up the program, there will be multiple ways that individual could obtain information or connect with staff. So the first would be through a portal, a website, that would have basic program information. Second, we would have a hotline and email on the website that they could call to then be connected directly with staff. And we would then be able to meet with, schedule a time to meet with them in person at the permit center, or direct them to resources that can better assist them.
So you have bilingual staff.
Yes.
You know, just my last question on this loan transfer, because I'm still waiting on the loan transfer from Williams Road from many years ago. So when I hear loans, I mean, what is the reality that this loan will be? I know you mentioned that once we're up and running and the money starts coming in, we'll be able to pay this loan.
So if, Alexis, if you could please bring the PowerPoint up. So EPS's projections, again, we're being very, very conservative. So we're projecting 30% collection rate when already, kind of with our rental registration, we've been able to reach 46%. So we're already doing, you know, through past program implementation, a little higher than what we're projecting. But this is a new program, it's, we're going to be, that we're going to be standing up using a new database. So if you, Alexis, please forward, or I. So here in this slide, it's easier for me to see it here, you'll see in year three, at 50% collection, we are going to be ahead by $97,000. And again, these are projections, this is not exact science, this is not guaranteeing it. By increasing the rates, we are projecting that we will reach cost neutrality in two years, if each year we're gaining a temp. in two years, if each year we're gaining a ten percent increase in collections, which, again, very conservative. So really, we're anticipating that each year we'll get closer to that neutrality. We won't need to ask for additional monies. And then any overage, as you see as we go forward, we would do a couple things. One, we would pay back the general fund. And two, we would adjust fees to match budget and program costs. Because this is not to be a revenue-generating enterprise. This is to cover costs. And so those costs would include paying back the startup costs received from the general fund.
Just one, did I already say one last question? Thank you. This is my last question. Ms. Brenton, when do you see, you know, as the program is up and running, when will this council get some kind of report every so many months or a year, or just to see how it's working?
Yes, definitely. You know, we are anticipating that the first report back will be at approximately five months. Because we'll need to come to you in May, June as we're projecting our budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six year and making any fee adjustment as appropriate or staffing adjustment. So at minimum, kind of at that five, six-month mark, we're going to be reporting out. And then we can come back, you know, every six months to a year at the most, you know, at minimum annually. But as we're getting stood up, we're happy to give regular updates.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gonzalez? Councilwoman Sandoval?
I know we're projecting just small participation initially. But, you know, as we go on to the following year, let's say those that participated, are we going to evaluate how much actually came in? And then, well, sorry, yeah. Yeah, and then those who did not participate, are they going to have to, are those fees going to have to be paid by the people who do participate? Or what is our plan for?
No.
Education and enforcement?
So we will do ongoing education and enforcement. And in the resolution, it does state that thirty days after invoice, the payment becomes delinquent, if not paid. And there will be a ten percent delinquency late payment fee assessed. So as soon as the invoice goes out, they have thirty days to pay. There will be follow-up notices. But we're hoping that that will also be an incentive. And hopefully through our education and easy use of the portal, which was approved tonight, follow me, we will make participation much easier.
And this is a question, just, has your office received increased calls from residents facing eviction lately or notice of termination for leases? Is that something you're receiving?
I haven't received, I have not been made aware of any notices. I am aware that I am approving probably thirty rent assistance deposits. You know, anywhere from ten to twenty a week. You know, we are really using the opportunity with the United Way funds for rapid rehousing to assist individuals with their deposit.
How much do we have left in that fund, do we know?
Oh. I'd have to get you a report. I don't have it in my head. Because again, the number is changing weekly as we spend.
Just so we can pass that information.
Yes, happy to. But my understanding is the funding is to be spent by the end of the fiscal year. And I believe we are over halfway. So I believe we spent approximately a hundred and fifty thousand, and we have about a hundred thousand to go. Those are rough numbers.
Okay, thank you.
And we have a question from Councilmember Osornio.
And sorry, I know that I said I didn't have any questions. But in hearing the question that Councilmember Barrera had, can you just walk me through what a loan transfer is? And how does, how does staff use that as a funding mechanism?
So I might defer, in terms of the technical aspect of how that works, to our finance director, Selena Andrews.
Hi, thank you for the question. So the way it works is we would identify within the general fund where this money can come from. And so we've gone through that exercise, and there is funding available. And so a loan essentially is, once it exceeds the cost recovery and there's additional monies prior to reducing the fees, we need to pay back the general fund.
Now, would this be a loan because there's a projected place where income is going to be coming in? Is that what would approve for a loan transfer to be done?
No, so any, so anytime you put up a, you implement a cost recovery program.
Cost recovery program.
There should be a mention of how the money is going to be funded. And then what happens afterwards, right? And if it's the general loan, well, it's not everybody's obligation to pay for this program, right? Only those participating. And so it makes sense to make sure that the, that the general fund is made whole.
Okay, thank you. Now for the questions.
Thank you, and I have no questions on my end. So now what we're going to do is we're going to go ahead and open the public hearing. And we're going to go to public comment in the council chambers. Then we're going to go to public comment via Zoom. Public comment is limited to two minutes per speaker. So if we could please go ahead and have folks sign up at the podium for public comment.
Good evening. Once again, my name is Bill Freeman, and I support this wholeheartedly. There's a lot of working people here in Salinas that live in their cars. And we made the news, I think, last year, the year before that, where we're one of the most expensive places to live in the entire country. And if it wasn't for my family helping me with rent, I'd be homeless, because I pay over two-thousand dollars a month. It's not the best place to live, but I'm not homeless right now. I'm grateful for that, grateful for my family helping me. But what I'm saying is that my concern with the results of the last election for city council is this, this ordinance being rescinded by the majority of people who got elected last two weeks ago. I don't want that to happen. But it could happen, because the majority of those people are probably opposed to this. And I want this to be where they can't rescind this ordinance, because people really need the help in this city for housing. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Good afternoon, councilmembers. My name is Genesis Mohica, and you have seen my face quite a few times with the Center for Community Advocacy. I'm here to say thank you, for one, listening to our community and really taking this into consideration. And thank you to whatever team is there working on the analysis and the proposals and the budgets and all that. It's a lot of hard work put in. But I can also see that it's very clearly thought out. There's a lot of information on that data and a lot of feedback that shows that this will work and really help our community. Any concerns that anybody has is, is, the concerns that they have are more about money. And even the money data being shown today is very thought out. So when it comes to money and the hard-working families of Salinas, you want to clearly, truly consider that today and kind of just go through it step by step. And it looks like that was presented today. The hard-working families of Salinas deserve better. They deserve a safe home, and they deserve a stable home. And this sounds like something, even in the future, in the years to come, that will help. And I really like that they also included that there will be check-ins in this, so it could give anybody that has any concerns the state of mind that this will be continuous updates and just regoing. And even adjustments can be made, even if there still are those concerns. So thank you.
Good evening, city councilmembers. Luis Chaco Juarez for Building Healthy Communities. And just want to uplift what we are witnessing right now is this history, this investment in fifty-three percent of the city population, the Salinas population being that of the tenants, the tenant population, the tenant community of Salinas, that for the first time, they were taken into full consideration. And hearing the details around the plan, I'm personally feeling excited that one of the strongest, one of the strongest ordinances in the state amongst the thirty-plus other communities that have their own ordinances will have, you know, will have the moment, will have this time to, for our neighbors, our community, to experience. And it's gonna, it calls on, it calls on everybody involved to recognize just how courageous this is. So that we're not only going to see the support for our tenant neighbors, but we're, we'll be able to see, we'll be able to see the positive impact on our local economy. All our small businesses, big businesses here that will benefit from having customers that are able to patronize and continue supporting this local economy. So excited, and again, thank you to this city council.
Good evening, members of the council. My name is Jesús Estrada, and I'm an organizer with CCA. And I'm here because I want to make a comment. I want to say something that is very important. It is very important for this program to have a budget, so it works. So rent stabilization and the rent registry works, we need to have a budget, because we need to have staff. We need to have staff to be able to follow up. Like, for example, when we come here and we ask who the landlords are or who the owners, it is hard to know that if there's no staff to tell us. Also, the budget is important, because there has to be people that help the community. Like, sometimes I have come to the city, and I want to know who is the owner of a certain property. And it's hard, because there's nobody really dedicated to that function. So we really don't know who the owner is. And sometimes we want to know who the owner is, because he's a bad landlord and he's not fixing anything in the apartment. So that is why it's important to have a budget to make this program work. And I also want to thank you all for hearing us, for supporting us, for hearing the residents. And you're going to continue seeing us, and we're going to continue forward with this program. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jason Pineta. I just want to say briefly, I support the ordinance. And I want to thank the city council again and the people that helped, and the members of the community that showed up to the meetings and helped to get the ordinance passed and encouraged people to, the city council members, to pass the ordinance. And I just, I saw this presentation about the budget. And I think it's a very, well, creating the, I guess, infrastructure to deal with the rent ordinance. It seems very well-thought-out and well-planned. And I hope that, like, members of the community that are skeptical about the rent ordinance will look at this and consider that it's a, it's a well-planned-out situation. And that it will encourage them to get behind the rent ordinance, or the rent stabilization. And, yeah, and just that people hopefully will come out more, people will come out and support the rent stabilization, because it's important and we need to protect it. Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the Salinas City Council. My name is Amirta Medina Lara. I am a resident of the city of Salinas. It is no secret that Salinas carries the distinction, this distinction of having one of the highest rental costs in the nation. It is a statistic that most Salinas residents earn approximately thirty thousand a year. And may I respectfully remind the council that the infrastructure of this city is based on agriculture and that most of our community work in agriculture. These folks are just barely getting by. Why is the city of Salinas not addressing the issue enough? May I also add that most of the youth live with their families, with their parents, despite possessing college degrees. This city, and in particular, the state of California, has the funds to solve this problem plaguing our communities. What message are you sending to the youth when we look towards our leaders and receive little in return? So with that, I hope you approve the budget and fees to support the registry fees and rent stabilization ordinance. Thank you very much for your time.
Good afternoon. Thank you for hearing us. I am here talking, representing many people. And I'm here to ask you to please approve funds for this program. There's a lot of people that are suffering. There's a lot of people that are seasonal workers. A lot of people are earning less money. They have small children, and they really can't make ends meet. I'm also very sad that Proposition Thirty-three did not pass. That was another program that would help for all the people that are struggling. For example, there is the mother-in-law of my sister. She rents an ADU unit in the back of a house. And the thing is that this, my sister's mother-in-law, her house, her fridge doesn't work, her stove is rusted, the paint is ugly. And she's telling the landlord to fix it, but he gets upset. He's mean to her, and he makes her feel very bad about it. Even her daughter started scolding her. I've told her to complain about this landlord, but she doesn't want to. She prefers to just look for another place to live, because she's tired of having to deal with this landlord. And this makes me feel bad, because it's not fair. So this is going to help a lot of people. So I'm not, this is, he is not the only bad landlord out there. So it's going to help our community. So please approve the funds. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Manuel Garcia. And I'm just here to thank you guys for giving us a voice, especially during these holidays. We're so close to Thanksgiving and Christmas. And for giving us a voice for the bully tactics that these landlords are applying. And for the many people that are scared to come out and speak out, be not afraid. Be not afraid and stand up for your rights. Thank you.
Muy buenas noches, señores concejales. Y buenas noches también a todos los presentes. Mi nombre es Anastasio Pérez Ruiz. En algunas ocasiones he tenido la oportunidad de estar frente a ustedes y muchísimas gracias por estar hoy. Una noche más. Si bien es cierto, la ciudad de Salinas es una hermosa ciudad. Qué bonito clima. Yo he venido a contar algo de lo que yo he podido ver con mi gente de Oaxaca. Debido a los altos costos de vida en esta bonita ciudad, mucha de mi gente, ellas están pensando ir a otras, a otros lugares porque es muy difícil ya conseguir la renta, si lo consigues, pero a muy alto costo. Los salarios mínimos no ayudan lo suficiente para poder vivir, para tener un techo donde descansar. Y este, si ustedes que tienen la facultad, que tienen el poder en sus manos, que ustedes son los que nos representan, señores concejales, no pierden la visión de lo que estamos pidiendo, pues nosotros prácticamente nos quedaremos al abandono. Por eso yo les vengo a pedir que por favor nos ayuden para que se apruebe los fondos para que tengamos personales para que nos sigan ayudando sobre este tema de la renta. Porque va a haber muchas crisis, sobre todo información. ¿Quién nos va a proveer? ¿Quién nos va a ayudar? Sino ustedes. Gracias, señores.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Anastasio Pérez Ruiz. Good afternoon to all. I am here, it's not the first time that I'm here in front of you. This is another time that I'm also giving my comment. And honestly, Salinas is a beautiful city. What a beautiful climate. And I want to, I'm here because I want to express the point of view of some of my people from Oaxaca. The cost of living here is so high that some people have thought about leaving. Rent is so high, the cost of living is so high that it is really hard. Sometimes we can find a roof, but it's hard to find a roof where we can rest and live. So you are our representatives, you are the council members. So if you lose track of our vision of what we're asking for, basically, we're going to be abandoned. So I'm asking you to please approve the funds for this program, for the rental registry and stabilization. We need staff, we need people to help us. Where we can go and ask questions about rent, there's going to be a crisis. And we need to know who we're going to ask, who's going to give us information. And if you don't help us, then who will? Thank you.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Sofía Alvarado. Soy del distrito 2. Le pido al Consilio que apruebe el presupuesto para que esta ordenanza entre en vigor en enero del 2025 y pueda proteger a muchas familias inquilinas de altos costos de renta. Y que los propietarios tengan el mejor, en mejores condiciones las propiedades porque no es justo pagar muy alta la renta y vivir en malas condiciones. Yo, en mi caso, tuve más de tres años pidiéndole a mi arrendador, a mi, pues al que me rentaba, que me arreglara la entrada de mi puerta. Tres años, más de tres años, pidiéndole que por favor me arreglara, hacía yo notas, firmar fecha. El agua se me metía, hasta el baño se me metía el agua. Y no es justo pagar tanta renta en muy malas condiciones. La puerta hasta la fecha está cayéndose a pedazos. Le pusieron nada más un pedazo de lámina. Entra bastante frío en este tiempo. Y no es justo que la verdad que yo pague yo bastante renta y ellos no nos hagan caso. Y uno les pide y ellos lo que hacen es ponerte un papel que ya te quieren desalojar. Y no es justo, y yo les pido por favor que si ustedes están en sus manos, ayudarnos a nosotros. Yo trabajo en el campo y la verdad, como dijo mi compañero, lo que uno gana no nos alcanza, la verdad. Vivimos limitados y la verdad no es justo. Si ustedes los pueden ayudar, si en sus manos está, se los vamos a agradecer. En voz de todos mis compañeros que aquí están apoyando, pues para que nos ayuden por favor. Muchas gracias.
Good evening. My name is Sofía Alvarado and I live in district 2. I am here to please ask for a budget so the rent stabilization and the ordinance can protect us. It's going to be enforced in 2025 January. So I'm really asking this for all the tenants so they have protections against the landlords. And also, we need to have better conditions in the place we live. It is not fair to pay these high prices of rent and still live in bad conditions. In my case, I've been living in my apartment for three years now. And I have been sending letters and notes and telling my landlord to please fix the door. And he hasn't done it. Water comes through my door and it reaches up to the bathroom. It is falling off. He hasn't fixed it, he just patched it with some sheets. And the thing is that if we insist, the only thing they do is that they give us papers saying us, saying that they're going to evict us. And this is not fair. I work in the field, so I really don't make enough money. And I'm talking for all the people that are here, also my peers. It is not fair to pay so much money and live in such bad conditions. So I'm really asking you for your help and your support so you can approve this budget. Thank you so much.
Y si quiere dejar su información con la ciudad, alguien le puede llamar a usted sobre las condiciones en que está viviendo usted. Si quiere dejar su información aquí.
Hola, buenas noches, miembros del Consilio. Gracias por escucharnos. Sabemos que ha sido trabajo por meses para que esto primero se aprobara. Y ahora pues si no se hace la aprobación de ese presupuesto, prácticamente será un papel más ahí estacionado y que pase. Entonces estamos aquí en voz de muchos de la comunidad, ¿verdad? Muchos, muchos miembros, que a lo mejor mucha comunidad que no está aquí presente, pero somos la voz de mucha gente. Hemos estado escuchando muchas, muchas historias. ¿Y qué pasa si no se aprueba este presupuesto, verdad? Se va a quedar ahí. Entonces les pedimos, les pedimos que nos ayuden a que este presupuesto pase para que nosotros como ciudadanos, como residentes, estemos protegidos de todo lo que llegue más adelante. Sabemos que estamos en una crisis, sabemos que tenemos crisis económica por donde quiera y a lo mejor en ocasiones se escucha como nos estamos quejando, pero no es una queja. Esa es la realidad que está pasando, no solamente en Salinas sino en muchos condados. Gracias por escucharnos.
Good evening, members of the council. Thank you for hearing us, for hearing us. I'm also here asking you to please approve the budget. If we don't approve the budget, this is just going to be a paper. It's going to be something that is not going to be able to be implemented. I'm here voicing the concern of many community members. We're the voice of the community. We've heard so many stories. So without budget, there's really, it's just going to be one more paper in a desk without being, having any effect. So we really need this budget to protect the community, to protect us. There's an economic crisis, things are getting really bad. And it's not that we want to be here complaining. We are not doing that because it's the truth. There is a economic crisis and it's not only happening here in Salinas, it's happening in other counties. So thank you for your help.
Good evening. My name is Olga Reyna. And I'm here to ask you to implement the budget to support the rent stabilization. We have seen the needs of the farm-working community in this area. This is a very strong ordinance. It's going to protect our people. It's going to protect the residents against a lot of things that have been happening here in our city. And so this stabilization is going to be very, very powerful and an example to the rest of California. We can do this. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to echo what everyone else has said. Please do approve this. We do need it for the entire community, not just for a specific group of people. As a professor at Hartnell College, I can barely make my rent. And I know of a professor that's living in his car because he can't find a place to live that is within his salary range. This is incredibly important to all of us because this is our community. I've only lived here for 41 years, but my daughter was born here. And I love Salinas and the people of Salinas. I don't want to move. I want to stay. Thank you.
And if there are any other members of the public that would like to speak in public comment, please make your way to the podium.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches, concejales. Nuestro equipo de vecindarios prósperos, BHC, agradecemos a este Consilio el trabajo que han hecho en equipo, al gerente, al abogado y al Departamento de Desarrollo Comunitario. Han hecho un tremendo trabajo en equipo, un esfuerzo que constantemente desde un año, seis meses consecutivo. Por favor, aprueben el presupuesto para asegurar que esa ordenanza entre en vigor el año que entra, 2025, y pueda proteger a tantos inquilinos que necesitan estas protecciones. El trabajo no acaba aquí, apenas estamos empezando. Tenemos mucho trabajo por hacer para mantenernos unidos, fortalecernos e involucrar realmente a todos nuestros aliados, las organizaciones comunitarias que están con nosotros. Podemos hacer esto juntos. Por favor, sigamos adelante y aprueben este presupuesto. Ustedes han hecho un gran trabajo y yo me siento honrada de poder formar parte de ustedes. Gracias.
Good evening, members of the council and the whole team. I really, and the team from Thriving Neighborhoods. I want to thank the team from city council. I want to thank the council members. I want to thank the lawyer and also the manager and the director of the Department of Community Development. You're a great team and you have been working really hard. We have been working together on this for over one year and six months. So I'm asking you to please approve the budget so this ordinance can enter in effect in 2025 and protect all the tenants that need protections that this ordinance is going to provide. We're just starting, the work is just starting. We have to continue working on this. We have to be united, we have to strengthen, we have to get involved with all our allies and our community organizers. We have to continue all the work and together we can make this happen. So please approve this budget so this ordinance can enter in effect and honestly provide all the protections that we all need. Thank you.
Margaret Setanabonetti, I want to thank the council and everybody in this room who has worked on this tirelessly. That includes the administration and the staff. This is, this is very, this is really needed in the city of Salinas. It breaks my heart to listen to community members stand up here and have to tell their personal stories, which would really, our stories are our own. They shouldn't have to be put out in public in order to be seen. And this past year, especially with the elections that we've just experienced, and this is, I think, one of the reasons why we've had such contentious, just slanderous. I've never seen anything like it. I mean, as a resident, with all the dirty mailers and just lies that came to my door, all because the community is getting served by council members, that we have just waited for a very long time to have council members who see the public and not just those with money and deep pockets. And so I thank you for that. You know, Andrew, I want to, I want to single you out as a council member. I've never had a council member such as you who returns calls, who gives answers. When you don't know the answer, you direct me to where I can go for that answer, how I could look it up. The involvement that you've had in this community and in other communities, calling out violations of the Brown Act, calling out corruption, digging out dirt. Because as a member of this community, I want council members that are responsible with our taxpayer funds, that the people who are actually not afraid to speak up, but call it out when this is not, when it's not being used properly. And so the wasteful spending that has gone on in this city for so long with our tax dollars, to actually have a council that is addressing those needs right now. And we see that when that happens, big money doesn't like it. But I'm going to ask this community to stay engaged and to fight against these things. And by the way, and that means fighting against a recall against Andrew. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. Are there any other members of the public to comment, in public comment in the council chambers?
Buenas noches a todos. Primeramente quiero agradecer a Dios y luego ustedes por estar aquí. Habréis ustedes, los conocemos, hemos platicado con ustedes. Y estoy aquí también juntamente con todo este grupo de personas con la misma necesidad. No solamente una necesidad tan grande de renta, sino una necesidad tan grande de cuidado infantil, que los niños son los que están sufriendo y viviendo en casas, familias, tres familias en un apartamento. Yo soy profesora de cuidado infantil y educación temprana por 26 años. Me da tristeza cuando llega un papá y viven tres familias en un solo cuarto. Papá, mamá y tres o cuatro niños. Y es triste esa situación. Nosotros estamos sentados acá a este lado y nosotros los podemos ver. Y yo miro sus caras de cada uno de ustedes. Puedo ver sus emociones, puedo mirar sus gestos y se miran cansados, pero no cansados de nosotros, no cansados de su trabajo, si miran cansados su cuerpo físico. Y eso es agradecer, porque si vemos la hora y es tarde y ustedes están aquí escuchándonos. Y esto para nosotros es de mucho, de mucha gratitud, de mucho agradecimiento. Porque entendemos que ustedes están aquí para representarnos y lo han hecho de todo corazón. Porque no solamente nos han apoyado muchos de los trabajos en la comunidad, sino que también nos escuchan y nos escuchan con mucho respeto y de verdad eso les quiero agradecer. Escuché uno de mis compañeros, de mis compañeras de su casa. Yo estoy en la misma situación. Hoy por primera vez lloré mucho en la mañana de ver cómo tres años con los sinks tapados, los baños tapados. Hoy por la mañana lloré y mi hija ni siquiera, mi hija tiene 17 años y ni siquiera quisiera la escuela para abastarme. ¿Por qué? Porque lo rentado, ni siquiera quiere venir. Y lo que hacen es como dice la compañera, ponerte un papel y decir, si no te gusta puedes buscarte otro lugar. Por eso nosotros pedimos a ustedes de corazón que nos apoyen para que esto pase y no haga tantas injusticias. De verdad gracias y Dios les bendiga.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank God and I want to thank you for being here. We know you, we have been able to talk. I'm here representing this group of people. A lot of us need help with rent, but not only that, we also need help with childcare. A lot of people are suffering regarding childcare. We know that there are families, that are three families living in one apartment, in one room, mother, father, three kids. I have been a childcare provider for 26 years. And it's really, really sad when I know that families are living under these conditions. I can see when people come here and talk, I can see the expressions on all your faces. I can see the expressions on all your faces. I see your body language. I see your suffering. I see your faces. They're tired, but they're not tired of us. You're tired physically because it is late, but you're still here, and you're still listening to us. And that is something that I really am going to thank from the bottom of my heart. Because you're not, you're doing the work, and you're doing it with your heart. And you have helped us. You have listened to us. You have helped us with the community work. And for that, I really want to thank you. This morning was the first time I really cried because it's frustrating. As one of my other peers said, "It's been three years." And I have been calling my landlord because my bathroom is clogged. They're continually flooding. So, I just, you know, just couldn't stand it anymore and just started crying. My daughter, she's 17. She's in, she didn't even go to school because she saw that I was so affected that she didn't want to leave me alone. And the problem is that even if we tell our landlord that we're going through these conditions, they only say, "Well, that's what I can give you. If you don't like it, look for another place to live." Thank you so much.
Is there any other member of the public that would like to comment in public comment? Seeing none in the council chambers, we'll go out to Zoom. We have the first hand raised by 831-915-4436. You can go ahead and unmute yourself.
Okay, good evening. So, this is Eloise Shum calling. And I just want to sort of reiterate what everybody else has been talking about in terms of being very grateful to the City Council for the last, I don't know, year and a half or whatever. When other cities in Monterey County haven't really addressed the issue, or the attorneys or their managers have just said, you know, the landlord is king, and there's really nothing we can do about it. You know, your city attorney, Chris Callahan, your community person, Lisa Brinton, you know, they took the bull by the horns and they really stuck with it. And it's very complex, the legal issues that have to go around doing all this ordinance. And it would have been easy for them to just say, "We can't do it. We can't do it." But the City Council members also, Anthony Rocha, and Orsonior, Orsonior, he was also very instrumental with the, in the Housing Commission. And I just, you know, I really have to, you really have to give kudos to those people. And hopefully, they won't drop the ball. And because the landlords won't stop pushing back to have the same status quo. So, anyway, thank you.
Next up, Beatriz Diaz.
Hi, good evening. This is Beatriz Diaz. And, you know, I'm almost on the verge of tears also for all the comments, you know, that have commented right now. You know, I am, my family, one of my family members running through the same situation, you know, regarding a landlord who's paying $4,000 a month. PG&E had to go three times over there. Finally, PG&E told them that they could not go ahead and come back anymore because of some of the issues from the old house. Well, this was reported to the landlord. The landlord said, you know, that it was due because of their not taking care of the home. They've been there only like three months. So, therefore, the PG&E gave them a paper, you know, saying what was wrong with all the wiring. You know, $4,000 for a family of four, plus a husband and wife, you know, it's too much money. You know, I really appreciate, like I said, all the public comments. And I would appreciate if you board council to go ahead and support this ordinance because it's very needed, not only in the city of Salinas, but everywhere. And approve it for all. You know, like I said, this really touched my heart because I'm going through the same situation. I have two daughters that don't have a home because they can't afford it, you know, if they're too expensive. You can't find anything under $3,500 a month. Now, you still have to count your bills, your PG&E, your cell phone, your gas to work, et cetera. So, please, you know, I really appreciate if you can go ahead and approve this budget. Thank you.
Next up, Amy Salmina. Amy, can you unmute yourself? We're going to move on to...
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, councilor. Good evening, council members. My name's Amy Salmina from Coast and Valley Properties. And I want to address the pressing issues surrounding the rent stabilization ordinance and rental registry. While I understand the intention behind this program is to support tenants, we must also consider the significant burden it places on property owners. I understand it is very much needed, and we definitely need to work together. Currently, the Consumer Price Index stands at 2.1%, yet the ordinance permits a rent increase of only 1.57%. As mentioned by EPS, this simply is not sustainable for landlords who are grappling with shocking costs, insurance premiums that have surged by 200 and 300 to 300%. Property taxes continuing to rise, and now we have additional fees associated with operating this program. Understandable about the fees. These expenses are mounting, and the average allowable rent increase currently will be between $25 and $35, far from enough to recoup the rising costs. Moreover, the situation has become dire. Recently, the Monterey County Housing Authority released 1,000 vouchers for rental assistance, but shockingly, there were fewer than 200 available units in the county. Many who received vouchers are living out of our county, out of town, and even out of state, leaving our local families without viable options. I've personally encountered multiple. I've had to inform, sorry, I want to state that we're setting these people up for failure. So, I really want to work together on this. I've had to inform five families that we must move, that they must move because their landlords have opted to sell. The reality is that we are in the midst of an unprecedented housing shortage. We need to work collaboratively with local organizations and stakeholders to address this crisis. This is crucial that we find solutions that support both renters and property owners, ensuring that everyone in our community has access to stable and affordable housing. I just want to let you guys know what we have been experiencing lately. And it's really...
Thank you for your time. We're going to move on to Alma Loredo from BHC.
Y gracias. Buenas noches. Buenas noches, members of the concilio. Mi nombre es Alma Loredo. Yo soy organizadora de padres con Building Healthy Communities. Y realmente les agradezco mucho que nos estén escuchando esta noche. Les vengo a pedir, con la mano del corazón, que aprueben el presupuesto y que protejan la estabilización y el control de rentas. Esta es una ordenanza que trae esperanza a nuestra comunidad. Algo que quiero compartir con ustedes es la incertidumbre que los, los padres comparten con nosotros, ya que a diario enfrentan los retos de conseguir trabajo, que les pague suficiente dinero para pagar el alto costo de la vivienda, y la carga emocional que esto agrega a los niños. Algunas veces están en riesgo de ser desalojados, y los pequeñitos reciben esas noticias que son devastadoras para ellos. Y eso no debería de ser normal en la vida de un niño. Por favor, les pido que aprueben este presupuesto para el beneficio de todos los niños de las familias de nuestra comunidad. Estamos muy orgullosos de ustedes, y sabemos que han trabajado duro junto con nosotros, la comunidad, para traer el cambio. No dejemos perder este momento histórico. Nosotros sabemos que ustedes quieren seguir trayendo el cambio positivo a nuestras ciudades salinas porque los conocen. Muchas gracias.
Gracias. Next up, Robyn.
Good night.
Oops, sorry.
It's okay. Good night. My name is Alma Loredo, and I'm a parent organizer with Padres Unidos and BHC. First of all, I really want to thank you for listening to us. I'm really grateful that you're here tonight, listening to all our stories. And with, from the bottom of my heart, I please ask you to please approve the budget. We need this rent stabilization and this ordinance for all the families, for the community. We need to protect our community. And you should hear all the stories that the parents share with me. There's, they work a lot, but they can't make enough to really pay these high rent costs. And it is a very emotional charge. It is a burden. I'm sorry. It's an emotional burden for the children. It is hard for them to hear that they're going to be evicted and they have to leave their home. This is not normal. No child should go through this. It's something that affects them emotionally. So, we really need this ordinance for the benefit of our children. I'm very proud of you, of all of you. You have worked very, very hard with us to create this ordinance. And let's not lose this momentum. This is an historic moment for our community. This is a moment of change. So, please, let's continue moving forward. And let's please approve the budget so the ordinance can be in effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robyn.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As always, this topic is heart-wrenching. You know, I do think that we need rent stabilization in some form. The rent price increases have been outrageous. I don't know anyone in my circle who makes $1,500 to $3,000 on an annual basis for rent for an increase in their salaries. That being said, I'm also very concerned that what we're doing is not equitable. I think that we might be presuming that every property owner has enough disposable income to sustain such drastic cuts to their income. And I think we need to revisit that. It's also immensely concerning to me, the whole Amazon project, because they are known for repressing wages. And really, no one stood up for us in that. Whereas, a supervisor in the city of San Diego pushed back, requiring a livable wage of $25 an hour, which put a halt to Amazon coming into their city. And if we don't have leadership that is willing to stand up for us, not only on the local level, but on the state and the federal level as well, we're going to continue in this cycle. And I feel like you guys, you know, you're selling out some of the elderly that can't, that own property, and they can't afford this measure. And you're selling out the workers here in our community. Thank you.
Next up, Yesi.
Good evening, council members. My name is Yesi Vakky from Building Healthy Community. I'm an organizer. I also acknowledge a lot of what has been said with our community members. I stand behind them. I think nobody should have to worry about where to sleep at night. We're talking about a lot of the community members who are field workers. They provide food for us, you know. The least thing that we can provide for them is a stable house for them. Not only do we not have wages that is stable to live in this area, but that's one less thing that would help them. And also, the impact of the emotional and just mentally for the parents and the students. We have so many homeless students, you know, and for them to have to not only think about where they have to live, but also because their parents don't make enough, I think if you can continue to support this and pass this ordinance, that you can provide a lot of people, especially in this time, with some support. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Victor Caraviz.
Sí, buenas noches. ¿Lo escucha?
Sí, te podemos escuchar.
Buenas noches. Lo voy a decir en español el día de hoy. Primeramente, muchísimas gracias a todo el concilio de las ciudades salinas, a todos los miembros de su gabinete por todo el esfuerzo y todo lo que han hecho durante estos meses, y por el esfuerzo que han hecho por apoyar nuestras comunidades. En segundo, solamente quiero expresar, este, la necesidad que tenemos enfrente el día de hoy, y analizar lo que es la compasión, este, la justicia, trabajar juntos como una comunidad para poder solucionar los problemas. Pienso que es el momento de tomar acción y analizar todo lo que hemos trabajado conjuntamente. Y gracias a ustedes que han estado hasta el día de hoy apoyando a la comunidad, escuchándonos y dando su tiempo, y que hasta el día de hoy, en este momento, ya es un poco tarde, y que han luchado diariamente en escuchar los, los problemas y las necesidades de la comunidad. Creo que es el momento de tomar una acción. Y de antemano, muchas gracias por todo lo que han hecho. Desde el fondo de mi corazón, les agradezco todo a todos ustedes, y esperamos que podamos contar con su apoyo. Muchas gracias. Pasemos las noches.
Good evening. Good evening to the City Council. Good evening to the members of the Council of Salinas. First of all, I want to thank you for all the effort that you have been doing for these last months, all the effort that you have been doing to support the community. Second of all, I just want to highlight the need that we have in front of us. We have to analyze this with compassion, with justice, and really think of all the issues that we have in front of us. It is a moment to take action. We thank, we thank you for all that you have done and for all the effort, for listening to us, for your time, for being here this afternoon, and helping out the community. But from the bottom of my heart, it is a moment to take action. And thank you for continued supporting us always. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Carrie Swenson.
Good evening, council and Mayor Protem. I want to thank you for all the hard work you put into this ordinance for the past year, for the city, for the meetings. I felt like it was a very thorough community outreach, so that we're doing this with the community in mind. I urge you to pass this budget. This is a desperately needed measure to help people in this community, all people in this community. I, for one, have two jobs to live here. And with my rent, it makes it difficult for me to partake in the, in local businesses and shop in local and be a part of the community. But I also want to talk about the children. As the owner of Silver Learning, as an instructor at Hartnell, when students don't have a safe place to live, or they're living in unhealthy conditions, they do worse in school. And right now, our kids are doing very, very bad in school. You can look at the results. You can go look at test results. You can look at their levels. Our students are struggling. They are not making it academically. Their math scores are very low. They're unable to even take a test at, to be electrician. Seventy students who took the math test, only five passed from this area. So, you know, our kids deserve a healthy, safe place to live so they can learn and thrive. I mean, therefore, this ordinance is in desperate need. And I would urge all landowners, property owners, to embrace it and to be a part of the solution, and work with everybody so everyone thrives. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, CCA, Center for Community Advocacy. If you can please unmute yourself. Next up would be CCA. Next up would be CCA.
¿Me escuchan?
Si.
Si. Ahora Sabino López de CCA y residente Salinas por muchos años. Primeramente, quería darles las gracias a todos ustedes por las ordenanzas que han pasado y estamos aquí para apoyar, para que aprueben el presupuesto, para que estas ordenanzas se puedan implementar y puedan ser efectivas. Entonces, sin esos recursos, las ordenanzas no podrán funcionar. Es muy importante que apoyemos esto y nomás quería dejarles saber que estamos como ustedes y vamos a estar aquí para defender estas ordenanzas ahorita y en cualquier tiempo. Y nomás quería darles las gracias por todo lo que han hecho, por Salinas y por haber tenido el valor. Y felicitados por haber pasado estas ordenanzas. Muchas gracias.
My name is Sabino López. I'm going to speak in Spanish today, and I am a member of CCA. So I am here supporting the ordinance. I want to thank you all for all the support that you have given us approving all these ordinance. But we also need to approve the budget if we want to implement this ordinance and make it effective. We need the resources. We're here to support you. We appreciate the courage that you had to approve all these ordinance. We're here to defend them. And thank you. Thank you for approving this. It's something that the community needs, and thank you again for your courage. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we will close public comment and close the public hearing. We're going to bring it back to the council for council member comments and action. I'll start with council member Sornio.
Yeah, thank you, everybody, for their comments. I just wanted to let folks know that obviously here, in the rotunda and folks that are listening at home, that while this has been a long process and this council is, the majority of this council has been very supportive of the rent stabilization. I think that there's so much more work to be done. I first off wanted to continue the things with our city attorney, our city manager, all of our staff, community development, and obviously you, the residents of Salinas, for always engaging. I would just say that while there was a lot of work that went into this, there's so much more work that needs to be done to, one, continue to make sure that budget priorities are so that this could continue to get funded. I know today is the first step to make sure that that happens, but I would just say that I hope to see all of these faces continue to be here to really let this council and staff know what your guys' priorities are. So it has been, for me, and I know some of the council members, it has been truly good working side by side on ordinances like these that will protect so many people, that obviously not all of them could be here with us tonight. But I would just encourage everybody to continue to stay engaged, and thank you.
Councilmember Barrera.
Thank you, sir. I think to the administrative staff, I think what I heard today is that once we have the staff in place, accessibility is critical to be sure to have the staff be able to answer these questions. And with that, Mayor, I want to make a motion to approve. And also, I want to thank everyone that's been here. It's late. Several of you are going to be getting up early, but we're here to work with you, and thank you for being here.
And city attorney, would you like to jump in with respect to the motion?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. So there are three separate resolutions, and just to be clear, I think we would appreciate having three separate actions to make sure each of these resolutions is separately approved.
So in terms of, can you please put up on the screen the motions? And so, councilmember Barrera, what I would ask is for you to please individually state your first motion, and we'll have a second to that motion or request a second to that motion, then we'll call for the bill and we'll do it subsequently thereafter.
Thank you. So you want me to read what's here in front of me?
If that is your wish to make that.
That's fine. My motion is to establish a rent program fee for the rent stabilization ordinance.
Second.
Amend residential registration fees established by ordinance number 2663.
Second.
Establish the school year 2425 residential rental registration and rent stabilization program revenue and expense budget.
Second.
Six hundred and fifty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. Authorize the appropriation of two hundred and five, two hundred and three dollars, two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and three dollars to the program in the form of general fund loan transfer.
Second.
Approve and amend workforce allocation for two limited term administrative positions to staff this program.
Second.
Thank you. All motions have been properly moved and seconded. We'll go on for council member comments. Councilwoman Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I want to start by thanking city staff for all of their hard work and due diligence on this. This has been months, if not years, in the making, and I myself can safely say that I don't think I knew what to expect when councilmember Rocha and I requested this two years now, two years ago. And it has been, it's been really moving to see what people power does and what happens when you bring community to the forefront. And it's been a privilege to get to be a part of that process. So I'd also like to thank the residents and our community partners, from the signatures that were brought in time and time again by La Escuelita, Nidia, and Olga, and so many others, the phone calls, the emails, the one-on-one meetings we had, the group meetings we had, the just hundreds of stories that I heard and was told. So this is a far-reaching issue. This isn't a niche group that we're talking about. Fifty-three percent of our residents are renters. And so it's not an understatement to say that this will change lives all for the better. And I am wholeheartedly in support and so happy to be here. You know, I would like to echo and state that this is just one more step in what is going to have to be an ongoing process. This isn't the end of the advocacy and the organizing. We need to make sure that there is follow-through and that there is oversight and report back and that there is consistent and continued funding. And, you know, lastly, I'd like to close by saying that there are so many people to thank, so many champions and advocates, but I would really be remiss if I didn't take the time to thank Chago. This community is indebted to you, truly. And I am so, so proud of the work that has been done to get here. So very happy to support the item. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandoval.
Anna, the interpreter, I'm going to go ahead and speak in Spanish, and I'm going to request that you translate, so everything I say actually gets translated as I realize I have forgotten in the past.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Primeramente, gracias a todos. Fue un esfuerzo de todos llegar hasta este punto. Para el manejador Lisa y su equipo, Jim Pia, que no está aquí con nosotros, el abogado de la ciudad, Chris Callahan, para Carla y Anthony, que con su liderazgo siguieron empujando esta ordenancia hasta que se hizo una realidad. Siempre hemos tenido, desde que yo he estado en el concilio dos años, buena comunicación con nuestra comunidad. Yo pienso que cada grupo que los contactó, puedo estar seguro que todos los miembros que están sentados aquí se juntaron con nuestros grupos. Hicimos lo mejor para regresar las llamadas y servir a ustedes. Y lo hicimos porque queremos a nuestra comunidad. Es nuestro trabajo, pero más que nada estamos aquí para servir la gente. Si notan el tono de esa noche, no es como el tono cuando aprobamos la ordenancia. Y la razón es, debe de ser un día de joy. What is joy?
Gozo, alegría.
Alegría, gozo hoy, porque vamos a probar algo. Pero si escuchan las voces de mucha gente en el teléfono o una gente aquí, no sé si es el caso. Aunque hemos batallado por mucho tiempo por esta ordenancia, hay un temor, un temor real de que en el futuro, el próximo año, inmediatamente se puede voltear esta ordenancia y se puede completamente destruir. Es una realidad. Yo tengo fe que los concilios, los miembros del concilio que corrieron, tengo esperanza que los miembros del concilio van a tener esa misma relación con los miembros de la comunidad. No nomás es una esperanza, debe de ser un requisito de sentarse aquí, es que respondemos a nuestra gente. Son mis primeras recomendaciones para ustedes, es que hablen con cada miembro del concilio que va a estar aquí este próximo año, que abren con el alcalde, que se reúnen en esos parques como lo hicimos todos nosotros, que es su derecho a poder hablar con sus representantes. You know, no tengo duda que hoy vamos a apoyar esto y va a ser un voto, y vamos a estar todos de acuerdo. Pero va a seguir la batalla, y no nomás es juntarse con el concilio y el nuevo alcalde, sino es pedirles que sigan apoyando la comunidad y que den su palabra, que lo van a hacer. Sin ese, sin ese...
Compromiso.
Sin ese compromiso de ellos, todo el trabajo de tanta gente, y no quiero nombrar nombres porque se me va a olvidar alguien, y hay tanta gente que ha metido tantas cosas, tanta gente de la comunidad va a estar afectado. Yo no pienso que están cansados nadie en aquí, como dijo la señora, you know, no se sienten tristes, saben que habrá una batalla adelante, y seguro que todos ellos van a seguir en esta batalla, pero vamos a ocupar la comunidad. Tristemente, yo fui a una junta en unos apartamentos de seniors de bajo ingreso en Parkside, y había una señora que vino a la junta aunque no era senior. Ella tenía un Section Eight voucher, y me enseñó sus documentos que también, no lo van a desalojar, okay? Lo que hicieron es, no la van a renovar el contrato. Miré que no había ninguna razón por desalojación, más que desalojar, más que no querían renovar el contrato. Y me quedé pensando, Section Eight paga bien dinero, es dinero garantizado, y por qué razón andan desalojando a esta señora? Y yo sospecho que a lo mejor fuera a ser, pues, al que sigue, a lo mejor le da mejor más renta, o, no sé. Pero, no más, quiero decir que sigan involucrados y demandan de sus representantes que sí hablen con ustedes. Pero, muchas gracias por todos, y la batalla sigue. Gracias.
Anna.
So, first of all, I want to thank you for all your effort, for everything we have done to get to this point. I want to thank the manager. I want to also thank Jim Pia, even though he's not here. I want to also thank Chris Callahan, also Carla and Anthony, they have been great leaders. They started as leaders for this ordinance, and now this ordinance is a reality. We have had, we have, we, as a group, as a community, we have all fought for this, and from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate all the work of the people. Most likely, tonight, we are going to approve this ordinance, but to be honest, this should be a day that we're all happy, but as you can see, the tone this day is different. There's no joy in our voices, and it is going to be hard because there's a lot of fear. And I know that this fear is real. We are afraid that all the work that we have been doing for the past years with this ordinance can be revoked and be destroyed and not become a reality. But I have faith, I have faith in the new members of the new council that have won. I have hope that they're going to have good relationships with the community. And to be honest, it should be a requirement for them to come and sit here with the community, to sit with you, to hear you, to support you. So please, talk to them. Talk to the new council members, talk to the city mayor. It is your right. It is what you have to do. They represent you. They should have to support you. So continue coming to city council, continue expressing your word, continue being together and united. We're going to continue with this fight and this struggle. It is a commitment to all the work that we have done. And honestly, somebody mentioned there that we are tired, and we're not. It's not that we're tired, it's just that it is sad. It is sad because it's a different tone. We know that things might change. And I want to tell you a story. I was at a meeting with some senior citizens, and this lady comes, she wasn't a senior citizen, but she did have a Section Eight voucher, and she was, well, she wasn't going to be evicted, but her contract was not going to be renewed, and there was no reason not to renew it. The only thing I can think about was, because maybe they wanted to give it to another person, the unit that was going to pay more money. So thank you for all your support. Thank you for staying involved, and thank you for all that you have done. I hope I didn't, I made you justice.
Thank you so much. I just want to take a moment to thank everyone for not only being here today, but for the role you've played over the past year in terms of seeking out community engagement, showing up, getting input from your fellow neighbors. I want to thank our city manager, our former city manager, our city attorney for their leadership on this, our community development staff, and our public, our community relations team as well, and this entire council for the support they have shown to these ordinances, and to my colleague, councilwoman Carla Gonzalez, who was my co-sponsor in the original request made back in April of 2023 for this process to start. What I can share with you all is the reason this is so important is because one thing we constantly heard through the process to get where we're at now is that these laws don't matter because they're already not being enforced. Why are you going to pass rent stabilization? Why are you going to pass tenant protections? They're not even following the laws that exist already. Well, the reason those laws aren't, you know, working to the degree that they should is because we didn't have the mechanism in place to make that a reality. This one's sure that we have the mechanism in place to uphold those laws and so that the constituents have access to be able to have the legal representation and support and resources they need to be able to make sure that these laws are doing what they're supposed to do. I recognize there's a lot of concern about the potential of what means for these ordinances in the future, but what I'll share with you all is, the power has always lied in the community. You all are the reason this ordinance passed, and you all are the reason we are here today. And don't ever let anyone make you feel differently. Anyone who holds any of these seats knows the power lies there with the public. We are an extension of you. And so long as you continue to organize, show up, speak up, and make your voice heard, anyone who holds any of these seats knows where the true power lies, and that's in the community. So please remain hopeful, and I am so sorry that once again, the burden falls upon those who are most impacted to make their stories heard. But the beautiful thing is, that's what we have community for, because we don't have to do it alone. We have each other. And throughout the last year, what you had was a culmination of community input and voice that came together to get to where we're at here today, and we're stronger now than we ever were before as a community because of the process that led up to this. A process that was based on integrity, fact, and listening to all residents' stakeholder voices. So thank you for... So thank you for, for the role that you played, and this is just the beginning. This is just the beginning, and remember, the power always lies in the community. And it's been an honor to be a part of this process with you, um, and I look forward to continue to see each and every one of you engaged, uh, moving forward. Um, so there has been a motion made. Uh, do you need to have a vote on each of the separate motions? Okay. So we're going to go ahead and start with the first motion.
Motion made by Councilmember Barera, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez, to establish a rent program fee for the rent stabilization ordinance. Councilmember Barera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocha?
Yes.
Motion pass. Second motion made by Councilmember Barera, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez, to amend the residential registration fees established by ordinance number twenty-six sixty-three. Councilmember Barera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocha?
Yes.
Motion pass. And last motion made by Councilmember Barera, seconded by Councilmember Gonzalez, to establish the fiscal year twenty-four twenty-five residential rental, rental registration and rent stabilization program revenue and expense budget. Councilmember Barera?
Yes.
Councilmember Gonzalez?
Yes.
Councilmember Osornio?
Yes.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Rocha?
Yes.
Motion pass.
Thank you so much, everyone, and that is the conclusion of that particular item. We'll now move on to, uh, council member comments, uh, council reports, appointments, and future agenda items, and we'll start with Councilmember Osornio.
Um, no, no comments, thank you.
Councilmember Brera?
Uh, yes, thank you. Uh, Mr. Mendez, to the comment of Mr. David mentioned about the finance, uh, minutes and stuff like that, I, I, I just want to make sure that, yeah, like you said, he's going to be here every, every council meeting asking the same question, so hopefully we work something out where he mentioned about the community, uh, even though we're informed in our briefings, he said sometimes the community doesn't know what certain line items are, that, just food for thought. Uh, also, I went on a police ride along with, uh, Commander Lalo Villegas and Officer Kurt Han. Uh, it was an interesting call. We went on a fifty-one fifty, very intense. Um, I was very surprised that even the mental health staff still needed the assistance of the police department, because they needed help. So the police department is very critical in that area. Um, also this Saturday, thanks to Mr. Jose Ariola, I don't know if he's still here, uh, we are having a cleanup at Los Padres Alameda School. That's if it doesn't rain. So if you wake up and it's raining, I'm staying in bed, so don't go, okay? I don't want you to be wet out there, Andrew, and say, well, Tony told me to come. If it's raining, don't show up. Um, also Monday, I'm celebrating Thanksgiving with the seniors at the Firehouse Recreation Center. That's going to be awesome. Ten-thirty, si traen hambre, voy a comer a la firehouse, uh, on Monday. That's going to be a nice event. They always put a nice party. Non-alcoholic drinks, but, uh, so thank you for that. And you know what? And I want to thank, uh, the city clerk staff, uh, you know, they've gone through some, especially with these financial minutes and all that, uh, I want to thank the staff for doing a great job, and, uh, we appreciate you. There's, there's no certificates here, but we just say thank you. Okay. You guys are champions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gonzalez?
Just really briefly, wanted to thank the folks that showed up, uh, this past Saturday for the cleanup at Nativat Creek Park. Um, always great to see community and residents active, um, in taking care of and working with the city, uh, for our public spaces, and especially, uh, grateful to see more and more youth present, uh, in taking on these initiatives. Um, and then just wanted to direct staff to make sure, uh, that we follow through, um, on cleaning the plaque that Tribal Chairwoman Louise mentioned, just to make sure that that does get taken care of in a timely manner. Thank you.
Councilmember Sandoval?
Yes, well, I had an opportunity to attend, uh, Laurelwood PTC Fall Festival. It was the first time it happened in six years. It was a big event. That is an amazing community school where the neighbors, I mean, they don't have to drive there because they're, they are so close together that they can all walk there. So, um, uh, congratulations to Chastity, uh, Steve Duran, who helped out, amazing high school volunteers. They did a fantastic event with games, prizes, vendors, fresh, uh, veggies from the food bank, and, um, all those things combined, uh, equal a better Salinas. Um, I had a great community meeting at U.S. Nutrition. Thank you to Sofia Cortez for hosting it. Um, a big thank you to Eleanor, um, and, uh, former Radio Tigre, uh, radio host, Silma Flores, and the Parkside seniors, uh, who are interested in hosting a community resource fair, um, on a Monday or Wednesday, and they're requesting some city support. They were just sharing they don't get visits from the food bank, and they would love to find out more about senior services and, um, other things like that. Um, Soto Park, which I think is one of our smallest parks, uh, but very heavily used, um, I know it's, there's no immediate, um, uh, plans for lights, uh, but there has been a request for lights or plans, so, you know, maybe we can see how we can make this happen. Uh, it's right next to our fire station, so additional lighting would be great. Um, December twelfth, in partnership with the Santa Rita School District, we're going to have a Winter Wonderland. Um, we're going to have Santa there and, uh, a movie night, so you'll all be around, invited, Santa Rita School. Um, and, let me see, excuse me, one second, folks. Uh, road repair is happening all across North Salinas right now. Garfield Circle, I mean, most people won't know where that's at, but it's a, it's, uh, an old part of North Salinas who recently got their sidewalks repaired, so they're very excited. Um, I want to thank, uh, all our city staff, our city manager, uh, Councilmember Osornio, uh, Debbie Aguilar, um, and the whole crew of the Parade of Lights for making it happen for the community. Um, you know, it really is amazing when you reach out to help, you know, reach out and let the community know you need help, uh, how willing our community is to make it happen. So, as they say, teamwork makes the dream work. Um, and as I shared with our city manager and city attorney, um, I have made a request that we have some of our ad hoc committees, um, uh, be public in compliance with the Brown Act as well, uh, just to help bring more transparency. And one more thing, this will be the last time you hear this from me, but this year anyways. Happy birth, wow, really, Tony? Happy birthday to my twins, uh, Ethan, Andrew, and Nathan, Luke, who are turning fifteen, coming up very soon, and I'm very proud of them. Dad loves you, and happy birthday.
Wonderful. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
And on mine, I just want to, uh, buddy with Councilwoman Gonzalez on cleaning, uh, the plaque, uh, at the request of the Tribal Chairwoman. Outside of that, I have nothing to report myself, so at eight forty-seven PM, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.